Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome you all here. At this time, I will call the York County Council October 20th, 2025 meeting to order. For those who are willing and interested, I will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the many blessings that you have given us, including the freedoms we have in this nation and the ability to gather together to govern ourselves. I thank you for the men and women who serve us in uniform and all of the first responders that put their lives on the line to serve us. I ask for your protection over them and their families. I pray that you would watch over our meeting tonight, that our behavior and discourse would be pleasing to you, and that -- and I ask for wisdom and guidance as we conduct the business of the people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any appearances tonight. We're going to move into the public forum. I do think it's important to go ahead and make folks aware that apparently the technicalities of us being able to livestream are not in our favor tonight. But as soon as we complete the meeting, I am told that the meeting will be immediately available for folks to take a look at. But there have been some things happening today that have prevented that from happening, and so, just to let you all know that. As we move into our public forum session, I do want to let folks know, we've received a lot of community contact in regards to the impact fee. Just to let folks know, there was an error in the posting of the public hearing. So the official public hearing is going to be on November 17th. At that time, folks will be able to come and speak, and that will be the official public hearing at that time, just to make that clear. For the folks who have signed up on the 15-minute list, or 15 folks that have signed up, this is an opportunity for folks in our community to come and sign up, to speak, and to address council on a matter that's important to them. We ask that when you approach the bench, that you state your name, give your address. If you have any connection to the matter, please disclose that. And if you will, please make sure that your comments are related to things that are under council authority. We would appreciate that. Keep your comments civil. We know that this -- there are some very passionate items that are on our agenda tonight, and I think that the best way to deal with this is the way that -- think of your grandmother sitting in the room, or your children, and how do you talk when you're talking in that forum? So that's the way I'll say that. First up is --
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Could we proceed with the oath of office in advance of the public comments?
I completely skipped that. Thank you, sir. We do have oath of office for our newly appointed board and commissioners. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you up front and will swear you into office. We have Scott Miller, John Bloomberg, David Oxendine, Paul Arini for the Economic Development Board from the various districts. We have Cheryl Sage from the Board of Assessment Appeals in District III, and Martha Kern with the Stormwater Appeals Board. As y'all approach, I do want to say, thank you very much for your willingness to serve the people in this county. Oftentimes, you don't get acknowledged at all. Folks don't even know how these boards work, but the county can simply not do the job that it's been tasked with doing without having the board members that are on this. And this is particularly exciting. There are some folks that are coming to the Board of Assessment Appeals. You're probably going to have a pretty big job with the reassessment coming through, and stormwater appeals is important. But it's also nice to see folks with our Economic Development Board. One of the things that the council has unanimously moved forward with is reconstituting the Economic Development Board so that we can have perspective from the entire county, not just individuals that are designated in a certain committee, but the entire county. And we are very much looking forward to you all serving on that board. And we thank you for your service.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank you for your service and your dedication and support. Thank you for taking your service and your service and care. You have each right hand and you have many others who have office. If you solemnly swear that you are fully qualified in the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been appointed to, what I will, to the best of my ability, is charge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state. The Constitution of this state and the United States of America.
Thank you again to all of you who have served. As we move now to our public forum session, I will call your name again, if you'll give your name and address, and disclose any connection to the -- if there's any financial connection to the item that comes up. And first up is Kristi Spears.
Hi, I'm Kristi Spears. I live at 7102 Anchorage Lane in Tika K, and I'm the chairwoman of the Fort Mill School Board, and I'm normally up here talking to you guys about impact fees for Fort Mill. And on behalf of our community and our district, our administration, our board, I would like to say thank you to all of those of you who have supported us. We've had impact fees now of this type for almost 10 years, and it's brought us in over $80 million. It has been a significant benefit to our community. We've built one whole school, we're building parts of other schools, and it's really been a significant benefit because we, at one point, had debt millage over 100 mils. We were headed to 129 was the projection at one point. We are down in the 70s, low 70s, maybe 74 these days, and that was because we had impact fees. Now, we have a love-hate relationship with Clover. We're always competing to be number one. It's actually a friendly rivalry, but we're always competing to be number one in academics and athletics. They don't want to compete with our taxes. We right now have a debt millage that is about double what Clover is dealing with. And as I think back to our situation 20 years ago, this was not an option on the table for us. And so, we had bond referendum after bond referendum and raised our millage. Had we had this on the table then, we would not have the millage rate that we have today. So I would ask you to think about that for Clover. You know, just in the last six months since we increased our impact fee, an example, we have brought in $7 million. Had we not done the increase, we would have brought in $3 million. We would have left $4 million just in six months, which equates for us, I don't know their numbers, but it equates for us to about six mils. That's the difference that a partial impact fee and a full impact fee can make. So I would encourage you to think about that as you hear from the rest of the people today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, you've already done one thing that I usually tell folks to do ahead of time. So this is how I feel about things. Before I ran for office, I came and I sat, I'm a lawyer, came and talked about something that was very important to me. It's probably the most intimidating thing for me to do, even though I've been in front of juries and that I've been in front of judges and I've done things. So this is the reason why I do this. I'm going to ask that you hold your applause. If you want to show support, or if the speaker wants to ask someone to show support, you can ask them to stand. But here's the thing, when you get up there and you have folks who disagree with you, or they don't clap for you, then it sends a message that I think is antithetical to what we're trying to do here, and that is to hear from everyone, to make sure that everyone gets heard, that nobody's voice gets squelched. So what I'll say to you is, if you'll just hold your applause, and if you support that, if the speaker would be, you know, if the speaker will say, hey, if there's anyone here who supports what I'm saying, if you'll stand up, that, to me, that's a little bit more civil way to do it, and it doesn't put folks under the microscope to where they don't feel comfortable coming to council to be able to state their opinion. All right? So next up is Jessica Cody.
Hi, thank you for hearing this from me today. My name is Jessica Cody. I live at 1694 South Highway 161 in York, which is the Clover School District. I'm the vice chair of the Clover School Board, and I am the Bethany area representative. So Tommy is actually my county rep in this, in the town of Clover. So I wanted to talk about living in Bethany. I've lived there for most of my life. I moved back, moved away for a short period of time and moved back to raise my family there so that my kids could go to the same schools that I went to. We have family land. My dad is someone that has a large tract of land. We all live on family homes, and we have the potential now to build those future family homes for myself, for my kids. And I know that you guys are worried about people like me in that area paying an impact fee. But the truth is that we are taxpayers, and we've been there paying taxes for all of this time. So I would appreciate you to, you know, think about that in the future. But so, one of the things I also wanted to talk about is that I'm a Realtor, and I have access to the MLS, I look at the GIS, and looking at data in my area from family land, which I'm gathering is from land from one person to another with the same last name, being built on in my area, it is less than 1% of the new homes being built in my school district. So if we're talking about impacting those people, it is less than 1% of that population. So I want you to think about that as well moving forward. I expect for growth to pay for growth. I believe in that. I believe it is my duty as an elected official to listen to my constituents. They overwhelmingly want this impact fee at full, and I believe it's your duty as council to listen to us, who represent our taxpayers. Please keep our taxes as low as possible. That's what we need to do, and we need to listen to our people. Growth should pay for growth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Amanda Hauser.
A little taller than they are. Hi, my name's Amanda. I live in the Kings Grove neighborhood in District II, obviously, in the Clover School District. So I am childless. I chose not to have kids, but I live here and I still pay the taxes towards the schools. And I happily pay those, and I would pay for the impact fee and the taxes again if I were to build another home in the district. But I don't think it's fair for people who are moving in to not have to pay their portion of the growth, and that the rest of the taxes then have to go up on us. Jessica just mentioned the percentage of the people that it impacts who have, you know, the family land, and I know that there are several council members who have asked people in their constituency if they want this or not for the full impact fee. One of them, of the people in their district, small sample, but almost three times as many said that they wanted this. And then this is a district, or an area in the district where they're worried about people at lower incomes. The emails to y'all have been overwhelmingly, people want this full impact fee as well. And I hope that y'all are listening to us as the taxpayers who have elected y'all for this. Our previous council member lost every single precinct, in a large part because of these impact fees, because we want the full impact fee. And CSD is not even asking for what they could be, they're simply asking to right what was wronged five years ago. I think it's also disingenuous that builders are the ones speaking against it when it is, it's self-serving for them, right? It's money out of their pocket. So I would like to ask people who are here to raise your hands, stand up if you are for the full impact fee, to show the support of who people who are actually coming out and asking for y'all to vote for this. You've given it to Fort Mill gladly for your own districts, please give it to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Caleb Standifer.
I'm Caleb Standifer. I live at 158 Evening Shadow Road in Clover. Senator Russell Long of Louisiana, good old boy, once said about American attitudes towards taxation, "Don't tax him, don't tax me, tax that fella behind the tree." Let's be clear about what's being attempted here. Some people who move into the district and buy a newly-built home will have children and some won't. Many of them will have an impact fee in the price of their new home. Some people will move into the district and buy a home on the Daimler tract or buy an existing home. Some of them will have children and some won't. All of this latter group will not have to pay an impact fee on their home price. The impact fee and the connection to benefits of projects are unbalanced. The proponents of the impact fee don't want to raise property taxes for themselves, or tax their friends and neighbors, or increase taxes for businesses in the community, even the large businesses. They want to tax the people who are buying new homes here, built on certain tracts, who have no say in the matter currently. This is not representative democracy. They don't even get a say. It's simply a grab for money from people who have it because they will have the cash to buy a new house, or can borrow to buy the house. And even then, only some of them will have the impact fee. So again, let's just be clear about what's being attempted. This is a grab for money from people who have no say in the matter. Raising the impact fee is unfair. Don't tax the fella behind the tree.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Ledford.
My name's Jeff Ledford. I'm, I live at 295 Cutter Point Drive in Lake Wiley. I'm here representing the Lake Wiley Chamber of Commerce. Sometimes we're given a chance to correct a past mistake. Council members, this is one of those times. We know how we got to this point. Five years ago, we had a county representative that pushed for a 75% reduction of the impact fee that was requested by Clover School District, and that, along with the increase or the inflation that we've faced over the past five years, now we need to have another impact fee just to make up for the lost difference, $15.6 million that we've missed out over the past five years. But I'm going to address it from a little bit different point of view for our businesses, our business owners. From a business perspective, approving this impact fee makes sense. Businesses within the Clover School District already help fund school operations, something individual residents don't bear directly. If the impact fee is not approved, the only alternative will be higher taxes for everyone, including our local business community. And here's the reality, small locally-owned businesses are already struggling with rising rents, property costs, and operational expenses. Many of our residents say that they want more locally-owned restaurants and shops instead of large national chains. But if we keep raising taxes to cover what growth-related fees should be funding, we'll only make it harder for those local businesses to exist. York County Economic Development Board has spoken often about wanting to make York County more business-friendly, but within Clover School District failing to approve this impact fee will have the opposite effect. This is an opportunity to make things right, to correct a shortfall from five years ago, and to protect both our taxpayers and our local business community.
Thank you, sir. Matt Burris.
You were close enough, Madam Chair, it's Matt Burris.
I could tell when I said it, somebody was --
2221 Sussex Road in York. I am a proud Clover native, graduate of Clover Schools, homeowner, taxpayer, and I'm a member of the Clover School District Board of Trustees in an at-large seat. I served with six other locals and lifelong residents of Clover. We have watched our community grow and change, and we have a pretty good idea of where our people stand on issues such as this. I live over on the east side towards Lake Wiley, and the growth on that side has been unprecedented. You can now visit Lake Wiley and hear accents from every corner of the country. I am not blaming anyone for that growth, nor any of us. That growth has been inevitable, but the one constant there has been the excellence and reputation of the Clover School District. That has not happened by accident. Strong schools don't happen by accident. It's happened with a lot of forethought and proactive leadership. These impact fees are just another step in that proactive leadership for the taxpayers in Clover. In my professional life, I'm a commercial insurance agent right here in York County. I talk to business owners daily. Act 388, of course you know, took school operations taxes off of primary residences, shifted that burden to our business owners. I hear about that regularly. I don't think that that is something that we want to continue to perpetuate. Mr. Aldette mentioned back in March when talking about Fort Mills' impact fees, quote, "One of the things that hadn't been talked about is Act 388, growth pays for growth, an opportunity for every resident and every business to have a tax break, laying the groundwork to help residents and businesses, offsets the cost, business-friendly." Those are all things that I completely agree with, Mr. Aldette, and I appreciate you saying that. Every bit of that applies to Clover, just like it applies to Fort Mill. Are Clover's economic realities really any different than Fort Mill when it comes to these things? Why would we deny Clover families and businesses that same benefit that we're giving Fort Mill? Also, I believe this body is considering impact fees for parks and rec as well at some point. Why are we not doing that for the schools? I understand tough votes, we face them on the school board as well, but like you, we try to listen to the people that we serve. Our constituents overwhelmingly support this full impact fee. The best time to approve it was five years ago, the next best time is right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
One other rule that I neglected to say is, this is an opportunity for us to hear from our constituency. One of the things is that we are not at liberty to respond to it. We're here to listen, and we have a, we have a very healthy agenda that is after this. So I'm going to ask you also, please do not call out an individual. If there is a particular topic or a position that you want to address, I think you can address that without calling out the person because they don't have the ability to defend themselves or respond to that. And so, in order to keep the meeting moving forward, I'm going to ask that anyone else speaking, not, not address one individual person, otherwise I'll have to interject. Next first person is Kelly Clark.
Hi, I'm Kelly Clark. I live at 3513 Aqua Point Road, and that is in York. Thank you, council, for doing the challenging job of leading the citizens of York County. Leadership is a challenging job, and fair leadership is even more challenging. I am here to address the Clover School District impact fees. I built my current home three years ago after the initial impact fees had been public, had been passed. My last child graduated previously, two years previously, and still, I had no problem paying the impact fees so that students in the area could have the same opportunities my child had in Clover School District. I'd like to share my experience with purchasing the property with a builder. Throughout the process, the cost of permitting the home and costs associated with permitting, including the impact fee, was never mentioned. The only reason I actually knew that the impact fee existed was because I had lived in the area previously. So I dare say that there are others here who have probably had that same experience. So if anyone has had that same experience, would you please stand? Thank you. So I also would have been happy to have paid that original $15,000, knowing that it was going to the school system so that they could continue their work. And I think you should restore that amount of the impact fee to Clover School District for that original $15,000 in order to treat all taxpayers of York County the same. This is a lesson that I learned from my father, who was a community leader when I was growing up, and something I keep in mind when I take on leadership roles. After all, the good of the many outweigh the good of the few. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Hopkins.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark Hopkins. I live at 1010 Arabian Farm Road in Clover, and I am chief operations officer for Clover School District. I've been made aware of some comments questioning the higher costs that are associated with our building projects in Lake Wiley High School, and I want to take this opportunity to clarify some of those misconceptions. As we know, the overall budget was $172 million, which was the $156 million bond, and $16 million investment by Clover Capital Funds. Lake Wiley High School was designed between 2019 and 2021 during bonds I and II. The school was designed for 2,100 students with a core capacity of 2,400. That has not changed. Lake Wiley High School was broken into the base bid for the building itself and 11 alternates. We knew we were going to have a challenge getting an awardable bid. After bids and awards, the project cost was approaching $201 million above the $172 we anticipated. The board gave the intent to award, or building bid to contract construction, and the district contract, our architects, and our management partners all entered into a months-long process of value engineering, looking through every system to see where savings might be found. We also considered all of the alternates. After that, cutting some alternates and through value engineering, we cut nearly $10 million. We got the project cost down to about $180 million. Some additional costs have continued to come up, traffic signals, athletics package, et cetera, as explained in prior meetings. But to date, we have been able to leverage our debt and remain at a promised 46 mils for our community. More than 50% of this project is complete and is on schedule. Although contingencies run short, we don't expect more cost overages, but they may happen, and we continue to seek opportunities for savings. We hope to build a stadium to complete this package, and estimate has grown from $16 million to $19 million for one to be built in 2029. Please pass this impact fee so we can have the facilities we need to serve these students.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sherry, I'm going to mess this up.
I'm sorry. I'm Mary Nell. I am Sherry Kerlick, and I live at 1111 Long Creek Court in Clover. And I had the privilege of serving our school board for the Clover School District for 12 years. And five years ago, I stood in a building like this and quoted, "Mr. Spock, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." The few in this case is the builders. Those are the only people opposing a full impact fee. But now I'm going to talk about staying in your lane. The state legislator approved impact fees for a reason, for growth to pay for growth. The Clover School District did its due diligence five years ago. We waited until Fort Mills' impact fee went through, was passed in full, was adjudicated in courts, was upheld, and we applied for our impact fee. Same survey done, same company, same, every Methodist, every method done to approve an impact fee, and ours was gutted because of a council person not supporting it, at which time we were told, if your council person makes a recommendation, the rest of the council follows. Now what we're asking for you to do is do your job. York County Council accepts the fees. It doesn't change the amount. The law is stated, this is the approved industrial standard for coming up with an impact fee. That is why Clover's number is different than Fort Mills. You have no legal basis for changing a number arbitrarily based upon the whims of council members, suggestions from builders. There is an industry standard formula. That is the number that it's come up with. Clover is not asking for the 21 that this year we would apply for. They're asking you for to right the wrong from the previous bond. Stay in your lane. Don't rewrite an industry-standard numbers based upon your whim.
Thank you, ma'am. Vance Stein.
I live on 405 Brown Road, York.
I live on 405 Brown Road, York. About six months ago, I've been a lifelong resident of Clover, but I'm actually in York. I'm in Tommy's district now. But anyway, I understand your job as a York County Council is not easy, and it's thankless. But it is appreciated what you do for York County. We appreciate it. I was on the town council, Clover Town Council, for 10 years. So I understand that it's not an easy job, but thank you for your service. The impact fee is a choice. It's not a requirement. So if you choose to buy a new home, it's going to have that impact on it. But not everyone has to build a new home. The Clover School District is only asking for like 75% of the suggested amount of $15,000. I mean, $20,000 is suggested. They're only asking for $15,000. Please support this. Also, on your mission statement for York County, it says, "York County provides quality public services in an open, efficient, and responsive manner." And that's exactly what this impact fee does. There's, it's really confusing when you give one district 100% and then another district 20 or 30%, and then the district in the county seat gets zero. I don't understand that logic. So please give this serious consideration. We're fortunate to have a great public school system in York County, all three districts, and this goes to help that. So please support the impact fee and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marty Cotton.
Marty Cotton, 1321 Tupelo Road. When I first moved here 25 years ago, I didn't know much about the Charlotte area. I literally stood up on the airplane, turned around, and yelled out, "I'm new to the area. I have a son going into kindergarten. Where are the best schools?" And three voices from the back of the airplane yelled out Clover School District. I would like to also point out that I have 20 years in the AEC industry, so architecture, engineering, and construction. To the detriment of some of the people behind me and other people in this county, I have been monitoring what is happening in the Clover School Districts. Why do we need the full $15,000 impact fee? Costs have dramatically increased since the bond was proposed and approved. The $172 million budget for Lake Wylie High School is now at $191 million and growing. The district has done a great deal of value engineering to bring the, to reduce the cost of this project. That needs to be respected by the council. Change orders related to Lake Wylie High School have not been submitted for the extravagant finishes or top-of-the-line equipment. They have been requested to cover unexpected costs like rock blasting, things you can't see. I would ask you, the CSD needs the full $15,000 impact fee to help us finish these projects. My children were afforded opportunities at Clover Schools that other children in the future need to be afforded. Also, facilities play a part in that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Sheila Quinn.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Sheila Quinn, 931 Thorn Ridge Lane, Clover, and I'm Superintendent of Clover School District. I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to clear up a misconception about something that many of you have asked me about and members of our community have asked about. It's a misunderstanding about the property our schools are being built on, and I would like to provide you with accurate information on the development agreement with York County that excludes impact fees on some of the houses located near our schools. So a little bit of history. In 2008, the Daimler International Company was preparing to move their headquarters across from where our schools are being built today. The York County Planning Department and legal staff worked on a development agreement with the property owners around the proposed Daimler site. According to someone who attended all the meetings, the zonings around the Daimler development were all different. Some were AG, some were RUD-1, some were industrial. So they were trying to get a common vision for how the properties could work together. In the development agreement they wrote in 2008, it excluded impact fees. And at the time, only Fort Mill had an impact fee of $2,500, which was granted to them under a local home rule ordinance from 1996. Then in 1999, the state passed its first impact fee law, which only allowed county and municipalities, not schools, to qualify for an impact fee. However, Fort Mill was grandfathered in because of that older home rule law. Fast forward to 2016, the state law was changed to officially add schools to the development impact fee law. And as you are aware, Fort Mill and Clover have taken advantage of this addition to receive impact fee funds, and we thank you for that. Fort Mill has been awarded the maximum allowable fee twice, and Clover has been awarded only 25 to 30% of its fee. In 2008, that development agreement was set to expire in 2028. However, according to the Planning Department this week, told us that a pair of joint resolutions in 2010 and 2013 extended it. We would just like to say that Clover School District was not a part of that development agreement, and we have not signed anything to extend that development agreement. General Assembly did that, and we want that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ken Love.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm Ken Love. I live at 1442 Love Road in Clover, and I'm Chief Finance Officer of the Clover School District. Schools in York County can only build buildings with a source of three sources. One is impact fees, one is voter approval bond referendum, and the other is the 8% money that both Google District Boards of Trustees are allowed to borrow. We are using all three of those methodologies to build Lake Wylie High School and Liberty Hill Elementary School. But all these things come at a big price tag. These are big buildings. They're complex buildings. We haven't prepared the 10-year plan as required in order to use the impact fees as one source. We have updated that plan as we needed to. And now we need council to come and act in compliance with the rules and regulations. Much has been said about that we're not adding new schools to the capital improvement plan, and we're not doing that. We're just working on trying to finish the existing schools that we have in place. We'll add new items down the road at the extension of the capital improvement plan. But we do need to pay for the items in our existing plan. And we've come to you because you are the, you're the place of last resort, if you will, because the buck stops here related to impact fees. Our local board deals with other limits and guidelines for the other sources. But we would like these impact fees to help us finish the high school and new elementary school and do those kinds of things that we need to plan for the future because we will need additional buildings. We will need additional equipment as the growth continues. We expect growth because growth is good, and we're happy to be part of it. Thank you again for this time. We appreciate your attention.
Thank you, sir. Johnny Neelands.
Thank you, council. Johnny Neelands, 3100 Philbert Highway. 50-year Clover resident. I will support the impact fee if it's fair and reasonable. It was said at the last county council meeting that the mom and pop shouldn't have to pay more school tax because they don't have impact on the district. So why should they have to pay an impact fee? They have no impact whatsoever. Let me be clear. It's not just builders who pay this. I'm speaking from firsthand experience. My 78-year-old mother, retired schoolteacher slash librarian, just paid $4,000 Clover School District impact fee to build a house on family land that she saved her money, entire life, to build. Not to mention, this land's been in our family since before they kept records. It's just not right. If she sells the house she currently lives in, a family from out of town, or for that matter, a family from across town, could buy it and have three, four, five, six children, they pay no impact fee, none whatsoever. It's just not right. There are exceptions for certain parcels of land. All the homes that'll be built on a Daimler property are exempt from paying any fees. National builders will buy up this property, fill it up with homes as much as eight homes per acre, and pay nothing. That will be a huge impact. Let growth pay for growth, right? When we build for folks that are already here, that's not growth. I asked the district four years ago to make some exemptions for appropriate people, and I was told that would be discrimination. I don't understand that. Let's use some common sense here.
Thank you, sir. Michael Pruner.
Good evening. Michael Pruner, 841 Hollis Lakes Road, President of Home Builder Association of York County. This isn't about money in the pockets of home builders. This is about home affordability. I gave you a key points to think about. In 2020, the capital improvement plan included housing stock under affordability, household income, cost of ownership, cost of renting, cost-burden analysis. They didn't change methodology. They gutted that, and now they only put impact on monthly mortgage. And for folks in the room that don't know how the $4,000 came about, it was said in the impact study that was done by the consultant that 30% of your income is a maximum you can put on attainability of a house. The cost-burden analysis said it was at 25.9 without an impact fee. A $4,000 impact fee took it to 29.9%. We no longer have that data in the report because it's been gutted by the consultant, so we don't know if $4,000 is appropriate today, if $7,000 is appropriate today, or if $2,000 is appropriate today. They took all that out of the report. Secondly, the school district by their consultant, and you have this right off their webpage, has been warned since 2024 they were going to be over budget. And I heard tough choices were made. But if I go 25% over budget and I was the CEO of a company, I'd lose my job. If I went 25% over budget on a house, I would lose my job. Lastly, I want to talk about reporting. So the school district has not completed the required reporting as described on page two of their own impact fee study and capital improvement plan, where it says Clover School District is also responsible for preparing and publishing an annual report. That has not been done. You come ask for more money, and it's not done. You have a copy of the Freedom of Information Act request in your packet that shows that has not been done, and that data is not available. Saying what you're going to spend it on when you draw down from the fund is not an annual report. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. I do appreciate folks being disciplined and with the civility here tonight. I know that this is one of those issues that folks are very passionate about. We do appreciate the community coming out and speaking on this. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. One of the rules under council is that any one council member can approve to have one, if there is an item under consent agenda that they won't pull out. They can do that simply by request. So item number nine has been requested out, and that will be moved to number three in new business. Do we have a motion on consent agenda absent that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-consent agenda is approved. We move now to our public hearing items, and this has been listed in a public hearing. I said this at the outset. I will say at the beginning, once I conclude reading out the title, which is lengthy, it has been the pattern and practice of this council that when anything has been published as a public hearing, then individuals who have come here to speak, that we will allow them to speak. In this particular case, there had to be a revision to the public hearing. So the actual official public hearing will be on November 17th, and this relates to the impact fees. So we do encourage folks to come out and speak at that public hearing. That is when the official public hearing will happen. That is when the official transcript of the public hearing will happen. Having said that, it's very important to me and this council that we be consistent with how we have dealt with these matters before. So we will allow individuals who are here and feel compelled to speak to address the council. It is a little bit different, though, so I'm going to, you know, hopefully, we won't get to a situation where we get into where I have to call some things out, but we'll see how this goes. So I'll read this out. Counsel to consider amending and second reading of an ordinance reviewing and updating the public education facility's impact fee imposed on all new residential development in the Clover School District Number Two pursuant to York County Ordinance Number 3020 to revise the established impact fee on the new residential development for a single-family detached dwelling unit to $15,035, to revise the established impact fee for multifamily dwelling unit to $7,430, and to revise the established impact fee for a manufactured home to $9,842 to authorize a revised intergovernmental agreement between York County and the Clover School District Number Two defining the respective rights, responsibilities, and obligations of the parties regarding the impact fee to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. For purposes of clarification to the community, the motion that was approved at first reading was to revise the impact fees to $7,000 for a single-family detached dwelling with prorated amounts applying to the multifamily dwellings, which arrived at $3,459 for manufactured homes and $4,582 for the manufactured homes, excuse me. So at this point, that's what the ordinance would start with. At this point, because of the issue that we had with the public hearing, I will allow individuals who feel compelled to address the council tonight. If you want to come forward, please give your name and address, any connection to the matter.
Good evening. My name is Winston Martinez. I live at 739 Arrow Point Court in Clover, South Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am a resident of Clover, South Carolina. I've been here for 19 years, and I like to share my experience with building a home in York County. When I started building my home, I solicited several builders, and during that process, I selected a local builder, which I was subject to impact fees as well. All the fees, all permits, all DEHAC fees, all construction-related expenses were ultimately passed on to me. The homeowner, the homeowner. Builders typically require an upfront draw to cover some of these costs upfront. Once the house is completed, all fees related to building a home are then converted into your traditional mortgage. Impact fees aim to ensure that the cost of new development is paid by the new residents who caused the need rather than the existing taxpayers. Fort Mill is the closest in proximity in this circumstance. In Fort Mill, impact fees have little bearing on the desire to those moving to the area. Homeowners are simply paying the fee associated with their choice of residence. Fort Mill, being proactive, seeing growth, was able to implement impact fees that corresponded with their growth. This has put Fort Mill in a position to build a new elementary school using impact fees 100% until recently, with a large increase already approved with little discussion or concerns of Fort Mill's area or how Fort Mill's impact fee would affect home affordability. I know we are not exactly the same. I'm not advocating to be like Fort Mill. We are certainly not asking for Fort Mill's impact fees. We would like to call attention to the fact that we find ourselves watching growth without clear explanation on where $7,000 has come from and simply no proactive plan for the future. We're not asking for more at what the study taken four years ago had requested at $15,000. Today's a chance to make things right, to have growth, help pay for growth. We have an opportunity now to do what's best for our community. Honoring the full impact fee will ensure that growth is substantial and that future generations benefit from the infrastructure and the resources needed to support that growth. I urge you, I urge council to consider this carefully and take action to support responsible development. Growth is coming, and we need to do better to be prepared. Let's do the right choices and help our community in the future. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Angela Sanford. My address is 1238 Hideaway Gulch in Fort Mill, South Carolina. I live in and have rooted my family in York County. My two boys attend school in the Fort Mill School District. My husband teaches in the Rock Hill School District. According to the York County website, the mission of York County, South Carolina, is to provide quality public services in an open, efficient, and responsive manner. Who benefits from these public services? The residents of York County. Who should be first and foremost on the mind of the council members when making decisions? The residents of York County. One of the greatest benefits to a strong community and a strong society is a strong education for our community's children. All the school districts in York County do an incredible job of educating our youngest residents. That's one of the main reasons why our county grew by over 24% from 2010 to 2020. Impact fees have proven to work in Fort Mill to help the school district accommodate growth. I'm sure people here from Fort Mill have seen that firsthand in our community. Fort Mill's been able to build an entire elementary school without increasing my taxes. They've also been able to purchase new school buses. My middle schooler rides the bus every day. My high schooler rides the bus to and from band competitions. Shout out to Cudaba Ridge for winning 4A state championship on Saturday, and York County coming in third, and good luck Clover this weekend, and Fort Mill and NAFO. Now, my friends and neighbors in Clover are preparing to get ahead of their growth that's coming their way and has already begun. The Clover School Board has done the same reports that Fort Mill did to assess an impact fee. The school board has made a recommendation to the county council that's even lower than what the report said they could ask for. It's an absolute no-brainer to me that this impact fee should be approved. This would allow growth to pay for growth. Thank you for voting to approve the Clover impact fee.
Hey, everybody. Scott Coconut, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful downtown community of Whiteville Park in Fort Mill. I'm here to support the impact fee in full. This is growth paying for growth. As a small business owner, our property taxes in our districts are extremely over other districts that own property and also. So this is growth paying for growth. So I do support this impact fee. I know York County's looking at impact fees. The town of Fort Mill has them. I support the town of Fort Mill's impact fees. And I fully support York County doing the study to look at the impact fees. But if we're going to nix this one or cut it that much, I would recommend we do not ask staff to waste their time and waste taxpayer's dollars to look at those impact fees. So anyway, but thank you for everything you do.
John Gossett, 5717 Lake Wiley Road. I want to start with clearing up a few things. Some of these were items I'm going to touch on were put out before the interview on WRHI. Some of these things were put out on the interview of WRHI, and y'all can, or CN2, and y'all can watch them for yourself. The Home Builders Association said that CSD's capital plan items, some of the items on their plan were not authorized. That's not true. And York County has verified that everything on their capital improvement plan is authorized. Home Builders Association also said that on that interview, I was there, said that the cost of new high school is so high because CSD submitted a bunch of change orders that increased it. That's not true. As you've heard, they've cut and cut and cut. We're down to four walls and a roof. The homeowners association said that CSD was part of initial development agreement. Again, you've always heard that. That's not true. They bought their land two years after that agreement was assigned. They had no part of that. But they were stuck with it. On that WRHI interview, a sheet of OSB was used as an example that the implication was that the cost of construction, the surge that we saw after COVID has come back down. Has anybody seen any housing prices come down, construction come down? No, it's all going straight up. Fort Mill? Y'all's costs come down? Nope. Nobody's has. So that's not true. Home Builders Association claimed that CSD has not met all their recording, reporting requirements. They just said that a moment ago. Ask that man. They have. Again, not true. The WRHI interview two weeks ago, the homeowners, the Home Builders Association implied that the tissue lobby study metric was changed and the implication was it was to affect the outcome. They just said that a moment ago. All I ask is you go back and look at the planning commission. I believe it was a month ago when tissue lobby fully explained how the methodology was changed and why. There's nothing shady about it. And I'm not going to speak for them. I will let them speak for themselves. Just go back and look at the planning commission meeting where they spoke, and that was about a month ago. It's very clear. The, I'll skip a couple more of these. The, I've got a long list. I'll be glad to email them to you. The point I'm making here is the opposing side that you're hearing, there's one common denominator in what you keep hearing. It's what you're being told by the opposing side. It's not true. Flat out not true. Every point has been disproven. Every one of them. Let's talk post-COVID costs. The pennies for progress before COVID, pave one mile of road, $450,000 post-COVID. It's now almost a million dollars. It hasn't come down one bit. The coroner's office that you guys are building. It started at $7 million. The last number I heard was $8 million. And if construction costs continue like they've been hitting everybody else, you're going to be faced with the increase the budget or you cut back on capacity. And you cut back on capacity, then you'll build a new facility and still be in the boat that you're in now with all the morgue at Piedmont Medical Center is full of bodies, and they're having to use an off-site storage facility. That's a nice term for reefer van to put bodies in. Stack them and freeze them. Same van that you, your chicken nuggets come in when they go to Walmart. I mean, seriously. And it's not because you, as the implication was, oh, you did a poor job of estimating. No, I'm sitting in the planning meetings. Y'all are having the meetings, you're going through, you're crunching the numbers, but then you get hammered by the costs continuing to go up. Let's talk dog pound. 10 months ago, I was in a meeting. It was $16 million for a new dog pound. 10 months later, now the price is 20 million. It'd be 25 before you get it built. Same problem. This building right here was completed in 2019. $24.5 million. If you had to build it today, it would be twice that, easily. So think of it this way. This big nice building of $24.5 million that you're in right now, in today's world, it's worth one dog pound. That's it. That's what these costs have been doing. So for anybody to imply that because the post-COVID surge has gone down, it needs to be drug tested because it has not. Here's the bottom line. Overwhelming, there is overwhelming support in the Clover School District for the full $15,000 impact fee. Not a question. How many emails y'all got? And phone calls, for and against. You know the numbers. And the against that you got, half of that came from homeowners, Home Builders Association. If you don't approve the full $15,000 impact fee, then those who vote against it, you're going to be siding with a highly conflicted special interest group. You really want to do that? That's not a good look. You can't use the talking points that's been disproven. That's even the worst look. It will, the people who vote against the $15,000 impact fee, the implication will be that you're just disregarding. It's not a 50-50. There's a huge swell of support. Does that not matter? It should. If the impact fee is not passed at the $15,000 mark, as had been spoken before, it started with the council in 2023. If y'all were there when a huge travesty was committed and it was, our fee was cut to $4,000. And here we are today after with everything that's occurred, there's one chance to correct that wrong. I ask you to correct that wrong because if it's not, it's going to cause a tax increase. Folks, there are people out there, because the bill's got to get paid, and that's their last resort. There are people out there right now who are one tax increase away from losing their home. There's people out there right now who are one tax increase away from losing their land. Let's talk small businesses. They get hit the worst. Justin McFos did a great post just recently about how his building in North Carolina, taxes were $5,000. His buddy's got an identical building in York County. It's $20,000. Same building, everything same thing. Don't want to add more to these small businesses? A big company moving here gets a FLO. They get a special cut, special rate. But all these small businesses that we all depend on, they don't get squat. They get hit the hardest. So you vote against this impact fee, you're going to vote to raise taxes on our small businesses. I mean, anybody's voting against the full impact fee, you're basically siding with the people moving here who caused the overburden of our infrastructure in the first place. It's not us against them. My next-door neighbor, good friends, they moved here from somewhere else. You couldn't ask for a better neighbor. Some of my best friends throughout, and I've been here all my life, moved here from somewhere else. It's only about fairness that they need to pay their fair share upfront. And I'll close with this. There's one person sitting on council right now that's going to run for House, South Carolina House Seat 66 in 2028, two years from now. And I ask that, you know, how can you claim that you support small businesses when you stomp on ours in District Two? How can you claim you're against higher taxes for citizens when you cause taxes to increase in the Clover School District? How can you complain, how can you claim to support the will of the people when you blatantly go against it in District Two? How can you claim you support public schools when you voted to slash the D2 impact fee twice? Twice. It's about getting it right. Just get it right. Just undo the wrong that was done to us five years ago and prevent a tax increase that will hit the most vulnerable people the hardest. That includes people renting, that includes single moms, that includes seniors. Care about all them people? Pass our impact fee at $15,000. Let's get this right. Thank you.
How's it going, counsel? I had something written, but I'm going to go from the heart. And, you know, my name's Stephen Halskeard. I'm 880 Jamaica Lane in Clover. I grew up in Fort Mill. Our superintendent that has left was my ninth-grade high school 101 teacher. And to see a guy like that become superintendent of Fort Mill all these years later, and me having the success that I've had to be able to buy a home and land in Clover and build a home and gladly pay an impact fee, and I gladly would have paid a $15,000 impact fee a year ago. And I think you have to really understand that the growth, it's not going to stop. I grew up in Fort Mill. I can tell you when I grew, when I moved there, in sixth grade, we had six stoplights from Highway 160 and Gold Hill Road all the way to downtown Fort Mill. There's 25. Now, it's not going to stop here. It's not. You've seen it. I've seen it. I've driven these roads. I've worked North and South Carolina my whole life. It's not stopping. People want to move here. There's one common denominator. You can fix it. I would have gladly paid $11,000 more a year and a half ago. And I can tell you, construction costs in a year and a half it took to build my home went up $75,000. I paid every dime of it. It's a real thing. So we can either be honest about it or not. But I can definitely tell you that I want my kids to have the same opportunity, and I would gladly go back and repay it if I had to. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to speak. My name is Amanda Cisco. I live at 1414 Harper Zenlet in Lake Wiley. As a longstanding resident of our community, I'm compelled to share my support for the proposed impact fee for Clover School District. Over the years, I've seen firsthand how important strong schools are to the vitality and future of our community. This impact fee is a crucial step toward ensuring that our schools have the necessary resources to continue serving our children effectively and to alleviate the burden of future growth on the existing community. This county has always been pro-small business. A large portion of school taxes ride directly on the backs of small businesses. Voting against impact fees in CSD is voting against small businesses. It's also voting against all constituents who are asking for more local small businesses. It's like a double slap in the face. Supporting impact fees not only helps maintain the integrity and quality of our schools, but also promotes long-term community stability and prosperity. I urge each one of you to consider this vital means for growth paying for growth and to vote yes to raise the impact fees the maximum requested allowance. I appreciate you listening and hearing what the community wants regarding this matter.
Hi, my name's Jeff Kidd. I live at 341 Gaines Road. And I moved here three years ago. So I wanted to offer my perspective because the folks in my neighborhood, they're all like me, they're newcomers, and they paid an impact fee in Clover School District. This isn't a big deal. To them, this fee is just fair. It makes sense. Having to educate these kids costs money. And all the folks that live in my neighborhood are from the Northeast. We paid much higher taxes. We moved here for a reason. This impact fee is a one-time thing that just makes sense. Nobody in my neighborhood cares, and they don't even talk about it. There are folks still coming here from the Northeast, from New Jersey, New York, Philadelphia. And this isn't even a thing. It's not, it's not making the home unaffordable. Comparatively to homes in New Jersey and the tax rates up there, it's very affordable still to live here. But we don't want to tax the current residents, increase their taxes because all these folks like myself decided to move here. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Kyle Eller, 324 Redberry Court in 29745. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I know that the protocol and the public notice is a major deal. And I did want to start by saying thank you for allowing people to speak. People rearrange schedules. I'm missing baseball practice tonight for my nine and 10-year-olds for this. It's extremely important. This gives me an opportunity to talk about civic activism with those kids and kind of explain in their level what, how important this is. But people arrange their schedules to be here and just want to make sure that that gets rightly appreciated. I don't even know where to start tonight. I probably wrote 12 different speeches. You guys understand. You guys have seen me before. You see how passionate I am. One about Clover School District, but also about District Two, my area of York County, York County as a whole. And that influence is growing into the entire region of Lancaster County, Chester County. This is an incredible area. It is so incredible that people want to move here. That is a fact. Lots of them. Are we really advocating to raise taxes on the citizens that are already here in York County when we have a viable alternative at our fingertips? We're restricted. Clover School District is restricted in how they are able to fund capital improvements. The opposition has explicitly said they don't care. They want taxes raised. The costs exist. Those aren't changing. The costs will be through taxes or will be through impact fees. Impact fees are not the answer all for everything, but it is an offset. It does provide a little bit of relief. And I can't believe we're even having this discussion again. It's bewildering, mind-boggling. Frankly, it's asinine. Clover needs to pay its fair share, as said by the opposition. Over the last 20 years, over $400 million in capital projects have been paid by those taxpayers. We're talking about a piece, a portion, $25 to $30 million of impact fees. It's conservative. That $400 million is conservative also for the last 20 years. We're saying that the growth, that mechanism of funding can't take up roughly 8% of the capital project funding for the last 20 years. capital project funding for the last 20 years. The noise of exemptions and Daimler, the market cost to build, absolutely ridiculous. The exemptions, great. I actually appreciate those exemptions coming up because now that means we need the impact fees everywhere else. It is more critical for those impact fees to be implemented on the homes that are eligible for those impact fees. Clover School District didn't have anything to do with that development agreement, and in 2008, it sounds like the developers had smarter attorneys. We're using that against the school district now? We have a rare second chance to get it right. Five years ago, we got it wrong. And the voters in District Two spoke on that last summer. That was the primary reason for our current representative in his seat at this time. I did have a couple of folks make comments about the number of calls and emails are absolutely exhausting. Good. It's what you're there for. I do appreciate the time that you have spent, but for a split second, I want you to just think, maybe all of those calls and emails are right. Perhaps the 99% of people that support it actually know what they're talking about and know what they want and are telling their representatives what they want. For someone to build here, it's an economic choice. Increasing taxes is not a taxpayer's choice. Building here is a right, not a privilege. I do feel for the people with generational land. I do feel for the fact that it's just the absolute bad timing of them saving up and being able to build. Impact fees are not permanent. At some point, the growth will slow down, not in the foreseeable future, not under this capital improvement plan, which is a very legal and well-done capital improvement plan, and costs that are eligible for impact fees in that capital improvement plan. So you have an opportunity to right a wrong, and this is not making up your own numbers. This is following a nationally respected independent consultant, and this is following a premier school district that has followed all of the rules that have been set forth in front of them. Now you have a choice to get rid of all the noise, to get rid of all the political influence, and to make the right choice that represents the people of York County and what is right for Clover School District. Thank you.
So, thank you, sir. I think that we've heard from a number of folks, and we've had folks stand up. It's very clear from the community. I think if there's anyone here who has something different to say than what the previous speakers have said, who maybe cannot make it to the public hearing, the official public hearing, I think that would be most appropriate for those folks to talk.
I arrived today at 4:00. Michael Pruner, 841 Hollis Lake Road. And there was two people in the lobby already, and another person sitting in the little computer cube. And when the doors opened about an hour later, mystically with four people here, 20 people had signed up to speak tonight in favor of Clover impact fees. And when I brought that to the attention of the clerk of council and to assistant city manager, clearly states on the top of that sign-in sheet, you must be here to sign in. And so we had some back and forth between the people for and against, and said, we do it all the time. We can do it. No, you got to follow the rules. Clear up about what I've stated, what I've said on the radio, what I've said here, I stand behind it 100%. Nobody's brought a number for it. I've given you numbers tonight, I've given you data tonight, I've given it to you in writing. I stand behind it. So if they want to talk about things being fair and not fair, while the district may have not have participated in the Daimler property being exempted, they certainly asked the county, how much tax money would we get off of that? The impact fee study is also required by law to identify any potential or pending economic development items that will impact the funding for the schools. Well, in 2023, it was announced by the county's Economic Development Council that QTS Data Center was going to relocate here. And a conservative estimate was $10 to $15 million a year to the school district. Why is that not mentioned in the study? Wasn't mentioned in 2020 because it wasn't there. Public press release issued by the county in 2023, it's out there. The value of that's out there. Where is that in the impact fee study? Comparing Fort Mill, we got our full impact fee, they should get their full impact fee. Well, in five years, when Fort Mill updated their impact fee, they had a whole new list of schools. They weren't trying to finish the schools that were in their previous impact fee. And it was said at the last council meeting, the first reading of this, that material costs were up. And that was the point I made on the radio, because of COVID and because of tariffs. Well, those don't exist anymore. And the cost of materials, I can't comment on labor, but the cost of materials are down. For the gentleman that got up here and spoke on Arrowood Court, if you paid an impact fee on the house that you built and permitted on 1216 of 2020, and the impact fee wasn't put in effect until 114 of 2021, I've got a form I can email you to get you your $4,000 back if you paid that in arrears. One other thing that's not addressed in the study that's come to light is Clover, like many school districts, allow their employees to bring their children to work if they live outside the district. Why is that not mentioned in the capital improvement plan? Is it five students? Is it 50 students? Is it 100 students? So are we making seats for these students as well because that's in their enrollment numbers? Answer that question. Lastly, I'm going to leave you with the fact that Lancaster County divides their county on impact fee. From Highway 5, where it intersects 521 north, they've got an impact fee, and that's where their growth area is. From Highway 5 below, Camden to that area, no impact fee. So if you want to talk about growth paying for growth, divide a county like you divide the school district like Lancaster has, and put an impact fee just on the people that are making the impact, not on the people in rural county. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. So here, I'm going to go ahead and interject. If an individual, I think council has heard from folks, if an individual has something to say that is different than what has been presented, or if an individual cannot be here for the official public hearing on November 17th, then I will leave it for them to speak. But I cautiously give that.
Hi. Mike Ballard, 115 Oak Street. Served currently on the Clover School Board, was not going to speak tonight, so apologize for my dress. Thank you for the opportunity. One of the things that I think hasn't been mentioned tonight is that the Clover School District for years has done everything possible to keep us in the top of school districts in South Carolina. One of the things I think that home builders use in a lot of cases to get people to buy their homes in the Clover School District. So it's kind of biting the hand that feeds you, in my opinion, that the home builders want to be a roadblock and stand in the way of this impact fee, when I can guarantee, if you'd like to stand and show if you agree with me, how many people have bought homes because of the school district they live in? And the home builders use that as a selling point to get people to buy their homes. But yet now, we're bad. We're asking for growth to pay for that growth. It's ironic to me that we are so concerned about protecting people for the majority that don't even live in York County yet, to the point where the Home Builders Association actually said on record in the WRHI interview that we should raise our taxes. Mr. Love and Dr. Quinn and the school board have done a tremendous job keeping our millage at the lowest rate in York County. And for the Home Builders Association to have the nerve to say, you need to raise yours up to 86 like Fort Mill, you'd have the money you needed. So I would just like to leave you with that. I hope that the council understands who is in their ear and what the people that are in their ear are saying. Don't bite the hand that feeds you. If you want us to maintain and be the Clover School District that we have always been and continue to be, we need this impact fee.
Laura Bradshaw, 512 Red Wolf Lane in Clover, South Carolina. We can talk about the Daimler project, we can talk about the study that was done by the school district, but I do want everyone to know that our school just had homecoming on the football field because our kids cannot all fit in the gymnasium at our school. Thank goodness for the ingenuity of our leaders to be able to provide that experience for our students. We moved here, some of us not even to our own. My husband got transferred, so we moved down here. And being an educator, I wanted my child to go to the best public school in York County, and that is Clover School District. And I would hope that you would listen to all these people here and all of these emails that you've received. Growth has to pay for growth. As a relatively new resident within the last 10 years, I highly support this, and there are many people behind me that back it. So the question is for you, do you support our kids? Do you support our community? Or are you supporting the homeowners, the Home Builders Association?
Thank you. At this time, I think that we'll, I think that we're going to, if you have something different to say, or if you cannot appear...
I'm Carla Pendleton, 3675 Hansmill Highway, York, in the Clover School District. And my comment is regarding the burden of impact fees on people with family land. My family's been in York County since before the Revolutionary War. My parents built a house around 1970 on land they inherited. They had the benefit of not having to pay for property on which to build their house. Even if there are no kids in the home at the time the home is built on generational land, those homes have the potential to impact the school district in the future. So I think the school district should get what they've asked for for their impact fee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I think it's appropriate for council to move forward on the item that's before it. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, we got closer.
It wasn't a public hearing, so we technically don't have a public hearing closed, but, right. So we do need a motion. Motion on the table is to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, we're approving the seven or the 15?
What currently is before the council is what was approved at the last council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I got amendment.
It's your own motion.
Of course. Well, nobody else was motioning. All right. I actually have, this is a two-piece motion, but I want to let y'all, we'll get on to it. All right. I've heard what everybody said about the generational land, so I want to move to amend the motion to include an impact fee exemption for one new or additional residential structure on platted lots, on lots that were platted 20 years before the effective date of this ordinance in accordance with the same statutory justification used to exempt the impact fees in the 2008 development agreements.
Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
This can go on for a long time, doing amendments and things like that.
Well, I'll make one quick comment, and I won't make it when I make my other comments, that I think a lot of us have reached out to the local state delegation, we're asking them to look into exemptions associated with impact fees because that has really nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight, unfortunately, not as council members. So hopefully, they will do something, they'll respond to our request to look into the exemptions and maybe apply the ones that make sense, excluding what you just brought up.
This point in time, what we are debating, just to be clear, is the amendment to provide an exemption that applies to what has been stated before. So just to be clear about what we're talking about here. And at some point, I want, I think it might would be more productive, instead of us debating amendments, for council to talk a little bit about where they are, and I don't mean to short-circuit this, or I'm trying to shepherd us in the right direction. I think, honestly, I think everybody sitting on this council believes that the problem that we have here is a state law problem, or a large part of that, because state law identifies exemptions and defines what you can do, and then there are limitations as to what council can do on that, and whether or not we can craft exemptions that are outside of what state law says and still be in compliance with the law. So at this point, I think the intent of the motion is well-heard. I think it's one of the things that I think council has concerns about. We can continue to debate the amendment, but I think if I can at least hear from council about where they stand on that particular issue, let's... Mr. Roddy?
I just wanted to ask legal, is the motion that he made, are we allowed to make that exemption under the current rule? Because if it is, I'll support it. If it's not, there's no need to go any further.
Yeah, I would need to evaluate that and discuss it with council in executive session. Wasn't presented with that to analyze the propriety of that motion.
So if we approve it here tonight, and it's not, we will have to remove it because the state wouldn't allow it.
If it's against statute, it would need to be removed.
Okay, well, I'll support it, and if it's not, we'll take it back out.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, so first of all, I got to explain this amendment real quick, because again, this is new territory for us, and we're kind of, we're going across and pushing this out, you know, to modify state law, which I do appreciate this. I do appreciate it. But I got to understand it.
So the 2008 development agreements preempt or supersede state law by exempting the impact fees? And I want to use that same authority to be able to grandfather in properties that have been in, not for just people, but any property that existed 20 years before this effective date. So if you owned a piece of property, and it was a piece of property from 20 years ago, I don't care if you bought it last week, but 20 years ago, that property existed. So people, somebody's owned it and paid taxes on it. Essentially grandfathering in properties. And if it existed, you can add one, you can add a structure to it. So if it doesn't have a structure, you can put a structure. If it has a house, you can add a second house for your kids.
So even if the, so again, I just want to talk through this a little bit. Even if the person purchased it three weeks ago, it would still fall under that?
That's correct, because the property existed 20 years ago, so we're grandfathering in the property.
I'm going to throw this out there. Would some, how do we feel about making a motion for executive session to get a little bit of legal advice here to talk about how we can approach exemptions in a productive way?
I move we go to executive session for legal advice on this matter.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move into executive session. Thank you. Thank you.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. We will resume the debate and discussion. Do we have?
Okay. After some discussion, I would like to...
Withdraw.
Withdraw my motion and make a new motion to defer second reading until the next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer, defer second reading to...
Of his amendment.
This, this discussion.
Not just the amendment, the entire impact fee.
Deferred, yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer, defer second reading until the next council meeting. At this time, I'm going to let each council member have the floor to talk about their comments one at a time.
I'll go ahead and go. So, to explain the deferral, we're going to get some additional information and also get instead of, so this meeting doesn't drag out very long or any longer than it has to. This gives the opportunity for all the council members to kind of get their ideas together so that staff can evaluate it all and bring back an answer to us. But as part of that, you know, I've listened to everybody. I've heard all those things and the main, the main sticking point happened to be generational land or people that have lived here a long time. And so, the motion or the amendment that I asked for, for the exception, was about the best I could come up with on that. I had several other ideas that just didn't seem to work out as well. You know, I don't have a whole lot else to say about the impact fees. Everybody knows my stance, how much I support it. But I do want to show that I am working as hard as I can to get us to the full fee as well as, you know, help with some exemptions or to, to help the, you know, other people in the community. I'll give a longer speech at the next meeting.
So I think for purposes of this meeting, what, what I'm hearing council say is that if there are any, any requests for information or any requests to take a look at specific exemptions, that you make that known here today and that we will have that information available for the next meeting. So that everyone has that opportunity. And so, you've put on, put online yours. Who else wishes to go? Comment.
Hmm? You want to go next?
I can. I've, I've worked on all week, which I will tell you, there was a statement made about emails and I assure you that I've gotten just as many in favor of four as against. And then talking to people in the community and, and I guess this is an issue with everything that we come up with, y'all just think privy to realize it. Except at voting time and whatnot and it, it amounts to, you have always got so many for, so many against, but you always have a greater number of folks that don't, in a voting case, don't vote. And that's an overwhelming number according to the population. And a lot of people don't even know, especially closer over on my side of when they changed the district lines that I got of their school district, they don't even know that it's going on. But where I want us to look at and have been working on is, you know, and, and I've already asked legal about it, is exemption versus exception. And like what happened with the Daimler property, you know, here we are being told we can't have exemptions, but anyway you cut it, that is in its form an exemption. Now, I've got some ideas similar to Andy's but yet different, but I'll hold that until we get the legal. So, and, and those in the audience know that when I run, I was 100% against impact fees. So what occurred at the last meeting, I want y'all to know, it took a lot for me to do that and the reason I did do that is because I know that it did need to come to a public hearing because everybody has a right. But I didn't like some of the statements that are made about this only affects 1% or whatever. Well, y'all have heard me say time and time again that we are not a democracy, we're a constitutional republic which stresses individual rights. So it may not, and you, and you may think you're the overwhelming majority, but that isn't necessarily the case because y'all don't get to see what we get to see. And I will admit, some of the statements that some of the emails have been made were pretty harsh for all of us. And I've never seen the time that the ones trying to help you solve or, or are responsible to come up with the answer. It's not wise to be, belittle the ones who have got to make the choice. And I think it very frankly uncalled for. But I'll leave it at that.
I have a question for management that maybe when we're at this juncture, you can help us in the future. I'd like to know what the data center is going to provide as an offset to taxes to the Clover School District. So if you could let us know that, that would be helpful.
We can work on that.
Well, first of all, impact fees, Fort Mill, I was heavily, heavily supporting it. It's, it was a huge opportunity first of growth, pace for growth and impact and helping our businesses and residents. So every, you know, everything that we talked about tonight for, for what you spoke of, you know, again, it's, that is a critical tool in order to address growth. The only thing that my concern when we move forward with this thing is I did not see apples to oranges on this and let me explain, okay? So when Fort Mill came forward and they asked for their additional impact fee, there was additional, there was two new schools being built, you know, right? My concern with the, with the conversation was that when we were having the conversation on the last time, the capital expenditures or the construction, it was coming from the first request, okay? And when asked, and I asked the question again, and I'm going to place this out to the school district, so, you know, if you can give me, you know, feedback on my questions here, I appreciate it. But the question was asked, is there, is there no new construction in this request? And at least the way I heard the answer, it was no. It was paying off costs from the first request, which was the two schools that were being built. Again, this is the way I heard it, okay? So, the question then that led me to get, to look into was that in the first request, was there, was it defined that a stadium would be built in the first request four years ago? Was it clearly defined in there? And again, this is a question, if you can send me the information, it'd be great. When I looked again, I didn't see the details from four or five years ago that it was defined a stadium would be built, okay? The next thing, again, as you know, you know, impact fees can't be used to pay debt services, okay? So once a school goes into operation, et cetera, you can't pay against that bonded, that cost of that, once that school goes in. It's not allowed by state law, it doesn't, it isn't allowed. So when I look at the next question I had and it was around the school buses, I said, okay, well, were the school buses in the first ask, right? Were they in the first ask? And again, if you could fill me in on that, I'd, I'd love to see it because again, I just did not see it in four or five years ago when that was asked for. So then it led me over to the capital improvement plan. So I started looking at the capital improvement plan and again, when I looked at it, I didn't see the definite, the defined cost of this, of the, of the stadium built into the CIP, all right? All right, I didn't see the defined cost. You know, the language, what I would have expected was, was a line item saying, my stadium's going to cost whatever, 15 million, I'm going to throw a number out. I didn't see that as part of the change order, all right? And then again, capital, you know, impact fees can, can, has to be paid, again, applied to additional construction, right, as, as you move forward. And again, this is why I'm asking the questions. Now, the next thing that I had was under the, let me see, how was I going to state that? Under the cost of the buses, all right? There was, I, I got, I was informed and again, I could be wrongly informed, but there was an original request for 21 buses at, I think, an estimated cost of 90 mil, 90,000 or 95,000. Again, I, I was told that. It was rejected because under the impact fee laws, it's required that you have to spend at least 100,000 on your buses in order to quantify under, under that, at least from my knowledge. All right, so I guess my ask would be, was there an original ask to buy 20, 21 buses at a cost of 90 or 95,000? And because of the impact fee, the price of the buses ended up going, going up. My concern there would be if it did go up, that's another whatever $30,000 of taxation. And taxation is taxation, whether it comes in impact fees or whether it comes in mileage, it's still taxation, right? And so that's 21 times whatever the increase was. So I'm concerned that it was raised up because requirements under impact fee. Again, just want to quantify this because they're just questions I have. And, and the last question, again, I know QTS was brought up and I, and I was going to ask, you know, what, how much is QTS, you know, going to be sending to the schools? And I think that's something that the staff will bring back with. And lastly, you know, lastly, I know, again, when you look at, again, the, well, I'm just going to leave it at that. Those are my questions. I'm going to leave it at that and if I could get the answer, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roddy.
I want to go back and, I want to go back and touch on how the last meeting unfolded and the emails that we've gotten. I want to first start off by saying, we wouldn't even be on the second reading tonight if it wasn't for Tommy. He graciously agreed to go to the $7,000 because as I stated at the last meeting, there were four votes to kill it and leave it at 4,000. But out of respect, he wanted to see it come to the second reading so that the public can weigh in to have this opportunity. And for us to get the emails that we've gotten, belittling us, calling us whatever you want to put in the email, is not right. It's not fair to us to serve in this capacity when we didn't say no and we didn't give a full yes. And sometimes people have an issue with meeting in the middle, getting a little bit more than they got, but they're discouraged and ill because they didn't get all that they wanted. You know, sometimes we make compromise, not to be a dirty word. And when people do compromise, they shouldn't get ridicule over it because it could have been a hard fast leave it at 4,000 caller today two weeks ago. But we wanted to get to the second reading, to get the public input, to come up with ways to try to be of assistance, like Andy's doing, trying to come up with exemptions to make things work that we wasn't able to do in Fort Mill, that we weren't able to do when York School District came to ask. And I do think there's, is not oranges to oranges or apples to apples when we're looking at Fort Mill. I asked for staff to give us the debt service mileage that all school districts are charging in York County. We got those today at 5:28 PM on the email. Leading the way, York School District's at 93 debt service mileage. Clover's at 46. Rock Hill's at 52. Fort Mill's at 86. And like Tommy stated, we get a lot of information that the public don't have or they can get access to it if they know what to ask for. But what that means to us when we see these debt service mileage numbers, it says that there's taxing capacity in the debt service mileage department. And we hear people come to this chamber to say, we're overtaxed, we're spending a lot on taxes, but with a debt service mileage of 46, that says you have some more capacity to increase on that end, packaged with whether it's a bond, packaged with whether it's through impact fees. So it's not a one size fit all for every community where you just come in and ask for impact fees and it's not a one size fit all when you just ask for taxes and it's not a one size fit all when you ask for bonds. You have to do it collectively with all the tools in the toolbox. When you just want to lean on one and not the other and exclude certain ones, it makes it heavy on one side. And not knowing the full, whether it's the four dollar amount, what all the, the impact fees and things that this money's going to pay for, it raises more questions. But the second reading and getting to the second reading and now deferring it allows us more opportunities to answer some of these questions that we have, clear up some of the things that have been said by this side, by that side, by this party, by that party. And so even looking out, nobody's going to agree 100% on what is ever done up here. There's always going to be some on both sides. And if you think compromise is a dirty word in this day and age, then I think you're part of the problem when we have to deliberate and decide things on how they go. And it makes you scratch your head to say, well, we wouldn't even be getting kicked in the shin and called all these different names if we'd have just said no last week, two weeks ago. But that's not the way this is supposed to work. It's not an all or nothing. I think we were faced with an all or nothing situation when New York School District came. And it was all or nothing when York came. And they left with nothing because they wanted all or nothing. And I don't think that's the way that this community works. I don't think that's the way society should work and it's definitely not the way my family works. So I wouldn't want to bring that same mentality here, but at least the public and those who have a genuine interest in helping the Clover School District, helping the community, helping the taxpayers, we're trying to do that. So don't walk away thinking that just because you don't vote for 15,000, you're against the kids. Just because you vote against 15,000, you're not for public schools. That's not the case. And I wouldn't want anybody to leave here thinking that any one of us that sits up here are against our kids or against our schools. It's just our job and our responsibility is to find a way to make it work and at least make it work better. And you can shake your head all you want, but that's our job and that's what we're committed to. We're not taking the easy way out of just saying yes and not knowing what we're voting for. We're not taking the easy way out and voting no. We're getting in, digging in, trying to find a way to make it work. But the emails doesn't help the situation because we are, we are human. When you're calling us names, when you're saying we're doing things that's not above board, it doesn't help. And I don't know if any of you that's sitting out there sent the emails. It could be somebody at home having fun behind their thumbs. But we are here to do the work and trust, we're going to make the best decision that we can make, whether you like it or not, somebody's not going to be satisfied. But we're committed to making it right and making it work.
Chuckley?
Yeah, I don't know how many of you out there have children. My wife and I share four. They are 34, 30, 27, and 24. And I tell you, if there's one thing they taught me as they've gotten a little older, is to have a little empathy for them. So let me talk about Fort Mill just for one second and then we'll shift to Clover. You just heard the, the debt mileage rates for Fort Mill. You heard, you heard York, Clover, Rock Hill, and Fort Mill. I have empathy for the Fort Mill School District to be at 86 mils to have to pass a $30,000 impact fee. And I don't, I don't have a great grasp of their finances, but I would, I would be pretty uncomfortable in an area where there's not a lot of room left for economic development. So you don't really have the ability to bring in more property taxes like other areas do, right? You're a little limited. I would, I would, and you've got more growth coming to your area, residential growth, not commercial industrial growth that generates your tax base, as it was said tonight. The taxes come from your businesses predominantly, not, not the residential that get taxed differently. 10 and a half percent versus six versus four if you have a primary residence. So big difference. Shift to Clover for a second. So I put myself in the shoes of the Clover School District back in 2019. When the Clover School District said, okay, we've got to address growth in Clover, South Carolina, how should we do it? Well, somebody said, let's cap the mills out at 46 and let's go for an impact fee. So they capped it out at 46. That was their commitment. They were not going to go over 46 mills. And if they got the 15,000 and $35 on single family, the lesser amount for multifamily and the lesser amount for mobile homes, actually, no, mobile homes was second and multifamily was third. So mobile homes actually, manufactured homes generated the second highest impact fee. That if they got the 15, one, then they would meet their obligations. So in 2020, when they came to county council and they asked, that then county council that voted four to three to award them $4,000, they asked for this money so today they wouldn't be $22 million short. So if they'd gotten the money back in 2020, the 15,000 and $35, we wouldn't be in the room at 8:01 tonight talking about impact fees, I don't think, for Clover. So to me, it appears to be a justified ask. I mentioned at our last meeting that a number of council members have mentioned the time that we invest in, in county council. And I got about five more minutes, but for the time I've spent preparing this meeting, I'm not feeling guilty for sharing five more minutes. I was in another meeting recently, I shared this at our last meeting, that the Charlotte region reports there are 157 new people coming to the Charlotte region a day. And York County is the second fastest growing county out of the nine that surround us, right? So for the second fastest growing county, we're probably getting our fair share of the 157 a day, right? Which are coming to our schools. So big impact. There was some discussion previously about banks and how you would, how you finance impact fees. So it's not, and I shouldn't even really be doing this because it's, it's not even what our responsibility is in making a decision on the impact fee, but I wanted to know. So I contacted the top eight financial institutions that loan us all money to buy homes in York County. And I didn't see an issue with how the impact fee gets paid. It's not a check. I, I didn't get anybody to tell me they require the homeowner to write a check to get the process started. Nobody told me that. So I won't get into the details, they're all eight a little different. In our strategic plan, we have voted and approved unanimously that growth would pay for growth. Maybe we didn't understand early what that meant when we voted on it, but it wasn't too long ago, we voted for the Fort Mill impact fee and I agree with the four people that voted for the impact fee. I was one of them. I agree with your reasoning behind that impact fee. I also think it applies to this particular impact fee as well. Since 2000, I joined county council in 2023, but since 2020, well, let's say since 2023, I can assure you that I have voted for over 100 expenditures that cost more today than they did in 2023. And I just made a list too. Some of these have been mentioned tonight. But how about the interchange at Highway 160? When I started going to RFATS in 2023, I sat on that committee with a few other council members. Projected cost $125 million. When it started building, I think it's 180 million. I think that's right, roughly. Significant increase, big dollars. The coroner's office, when I joined council, was one price. Today, it's a different price, higher. Animal control, roads, it was mentioned 2020, two lane road to repave it was a half a million dollars. Today, it's a million dollars to pave a two lane road. It doubled in cost in five years. How do you pay for that? HBHC, we, we had a problem here. We had a problem on heckle. The cost to replace the HBHC today is a whole lot more than it was in 2020. Roofing. How about our insurance? All of you have had your insurance go up and I'm in the insurance business, so I, I know. Doesn't matter whether it's your, your personal home or your commercial building, your cost has gone up. It's, it's gone up a lot. Good news is, we're going to get a break on that before long. So I for one, I, I'm not going to support the $7,000 for the impact fee because I think it needs to be 15,000 and $35, just as it was asked for in 2020. And the last thing I'll say is that we've all received, probably each one of us have received 350 or so emails, which I'm appreciative of. I will say that I've received less than 15 that are asking us not to support the impact fee. And honestly, about half of those were one liners. The ones that said, support the impact fee and not 15,000 and 35, it was the 21,000 they asked us to support, the full amount. There were paragraphs explaining why. And I've read pretty much every one of those word for word. I went back this weekend because I wanted to count them up and I gotta be honest with you, I got tired of counting. So I just said, you know, I'm just going to go, I got 50, we got 50 in since this morning, since you checked your emails. So anyway, I can't support the seven. I could support the 15,000 and $35. And that's all I have to say tonight. I'll share the rest for our next meeting.
All right. I'm going to try to keep this brief. There are a few things that have been on my mind though that I want to say. Let's not forget, the reason why we're here is because of state law. And there, this council has requested and in our last workshop, we have advocated for looking for a legislative government relations individual, used to have it in the budget, now it's out. I personally support that, think that we need to have someone there because we've been dealing with this for so long, we should have already had exemptions in the state law. We didn't create this. So my point is, folks, let's just remember that we're here to represent our county. I can tell you for a fact that these people up here care about our community. We're looking to try to do the right thing. I can tell you that it's difficult when this system does not work fairly. There is, no matter what we say, not a single person in this room has paid $15,000 in Clover School Districts to build their home, not a single person. In fact, only a very small portion, I dare say 1,000, about 1% of the people have paid an impact fee at all because it didn't start until 2021. So, and that amount was 4,000. What this council is being asked to do is to do four times that and just put it on someone. And, and you're not going to have people who, who show up in defense of that, first of all, because it's so, such an easy thing to say, put that burden on the next person that comes in. Put that on growth pays for growth and I do support that. Don't mistake what I'm saying here, but we've got to be acknowledging the real problem here. We need to be coming together as a community to fight for fixing the real problem, the root problem, which is the state law problem. Because right now, the way this system works is there is a real fear that it's pushing local people out. It is a fact and I dare say, I think all of council would agree with this. Impact fees do not slow growth. I can't tell you how many people have emailed me that. That's not true. It doesn't. And in fact, as I've sat on council, one of the things that really concerns me and I think it should concern you, is does it actually encourage track builders? Because what ends up happening is you're taking, in some ways, you're taking away a property right by saying, you now have to pay just for the privilege to build a home of $15,000 that nobody else had to pay. You're taking that away and you're saying to the people who still own land, you got a different, you got different rules to play. Well, the only people, if, if you get to the point where you can't let your kid build on a property and, and this is the way this system works, I'm a mother, I've had three children, my daughter just had a child, she's, she wants to build a house. So what happens? She's going to have to pay for her child to come in, even though we're not impacting the school district. That's one of the problems with this system in and of itself. I think it, it's also inefficient to have, you could have a family of 10 move in here and, and they really impact the school district and they get charged nothing, nothing extra. And I also think it's a little bit unfair to say, hey, other folks are just living on our dime. Because the reality is, everybody in the room is paying for debt service. Whether you come here tomorrow or whether you've been here for the longest time, you're all paying for debt service. So folks are, are doing that. I think at the end of the day, that's where I come to this, is I need for folks to understand and I'm going to echo what some of our council members have said, including Tommy Atkins and, and Bump Roddy. It is not helpful to have folks accuse you of being on the take, doing, being... It is not helpful to have folks accuse you of being on the take, doing, being stupid, being antagonistic to the school district, not caring about the community, not caring about the kids, simply because you want to make sure that the decision you are making is based on facts, is based on figures, is based on numbers, and does what it's supposed to do, and that is to advance our community and help support our schools. We live in a fantastic county. Who else has the one and two? One and two. And I, I like that y'all fight with each other. I'm ready to get Rock Hill to be three and, you know, York there. I, I do take issue with one of the comments that said that council up here rejected any amount for York. That's not true. What York did is they wanted to say all or nothing. And council was prepared to go to 9,000 and that wasn't enough. And there are political reasons for that, I'm not going to go into it, but, but if we're gonna really lay it out here and let's talk about truth and let's talk about what, what's really going on, I'm certainly willing to go there. I think at this point, there are a lot of questions that I would, I think are important to answer that I think will help advance the ball. One of the things is, and, and I think that Mr. Aldette has asked these questions. I, I think before the next meeting, I think we do want to have, because there's been some back and forth and we've not gotten clear direction. What specifically will the money from the impact fees be allowed to be spent on? What exactly are the eligible expenses? Because the council has been brought into lawsuits because that wasn't dealt with appropriately. So I think we need to have that very clear. We need to hear from the school district. What is the total amount of funding that's being requested? And what is it specifically for? What are the eligible expenses? And that has been explained, but it's been mostly generic. So I think there's some question, I've heard maybe 18 million is for the delta on the, the finishing of the high school and that maybe 18 million is for the stadium and there's some, there's some busing and then there's land for future schools. I, I think it just needs to be itemized in a very simple fashion. Let's get the answers to those questions and I'm gonna ask management to please follow up with, with the school district to get those questions, just so we're, we're not guessing anymore. Here, here are the questions, and I know Mr. Atkins and I have been talking about this, and I think this is, this is something where I think could be, could be a creative way to deal with this. But I also would like to know from management, from the Clover School District, of the 2,336 new homes on the books that still have to have the impact fee, how many of them are inside the urban services boundary district? To me, that makes a difference because, you know, Lancaster has had the ability to go in and, and say, look, there are different areas that have higher wage earners. There are other areas that, that don't, and they were able to deal with that. I think it would be important to have the consultant for the school district take a look at that, go back and take a look at that, because that's what I hear is one of the main issues here, is what's happening in one very concentrated area, they aren't having the impact that some of the rural area is and they, and how do we address that? I think that is, I think that is a very ripe area for us to find a way to address those numbers and to maybe look at an increased impact fee for that area and do a separate one. And I also think that legal needs to take a look at whether or not that, that's an area for an exemption and an ability to have some, some way to address what I think we see as one of the biggest problems. I also very directly want to have a legal opinion, and if we need to have an outside legal folks, then I guess we need to, council needs to be instructed. I do not support the fact that Daimler somehow has a free ride, an exemption. That's offensive to me. If there's a legal way to address that or to, to go, to deal with that, I think, I'd like to know that. I'd like for management and legal to specifically address that and explain to me why they're exempted, because that makes no sense to me. If we can't exempt anyone, how did they get exempted? That's a problem. And I think we need to have a clear answer to that. I'm trying to make sure I cover it all since we want to move forward. I definitely do support an exemption for individuals who don't impact the schools. Currently, the system only allows folks who live in an actual development that are over 55 to be exempt, but if you build your own house and you're over 55 and you're not going to impact the schools, you can't do that. I think an exemption in that respect would be helpful. And if we're gonna look at exemptions, I do think that one of the problems I have is that a lot of times when you make these decisions about impact fees, what ends up happening is you're driving people who can't afford to live in an area out of there. Where are they coming? Well, they're gonna come to Rock Hill. They're gonna come to York. And that's really not fair because people should be able to live where they work. So, I think having an exemption for teachers, first responders, fire police, I think we need to look into an exemption for that, too. All right. So the motion on the table is to defer the item to get the information available for council to evaluate this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter is deferred. Move now to item number one. In old business, council to consider amending and second reading of ordinance to amend the zoning code of the county of York by amending subchapter C, use regulations, part two, table 155.271-2, in order to change the designation of hotels and motels from permitted uses to conditional uses in zoning districts, GCO, ABT, MU, and UD, and to correspondingly add new section 3.40 in subchapter C, use regulations, part three, conditional and special exception uses, in order to provide regulations regarding extended stays at hotels and motels. Definitions, length of stay requirements, exceptions thereto, establish use, use restrictions, establish registration, property maintenance and compliance requirements, fees and penalties, county departmental coordination regarding enforcement and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Can we take just a two, two-minute break? I'm gonna take a bathroom break. Are we okay with that?
Approved.
Let's take a quick break.
All right, we'll move now to our first item of new business rezoning action. Consider first reading case number twenty-five dash seventeen, tax map number four-nine-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-three-four-five-nine-eleven-twelve-thirty-seven-sixty-seventy-four and seventy-five. To rezone from R U D G C and P D to P D and G C, a total of ninety-seven acres in District Three. Do we have information from staff?
Good evening, staff, or sorry, planning commission, council, long night. This request here to rezone twenty-five seventeen, eleven acres located on the south side of Old York Road, just west of the intersection of Hansmill Highway and Adnan Church, about five hundred feet to the west of the city of Rock Hill. Like I mentioned, this is eleven parcels here. The property is mostly wooded, there are a few ponds, some streams also throughout the property. There's a property you can see highlighted in blue, which is currently zoned P D, it's being removed from the P D. Zoning for the area, I think just about every district is located within this area here. We have a combination of residential, commercial, industrial, P D, as well as urban development. The parcels here are located for the future land use at a community center note, which is centered at the intersection of Adnan Church and Hansmill Highway, I'm sorry, and one sixty, one sixty-one. And from there, it goes from Hampton Ridge out Hansmill Highway and south to Adnan Church. Going over the rezoning request here, so there's three main portions of this request. The first one is to be able to add two parcels, and they're highlighted here in green, and then to remove one highlighted in blue. The net increase is approximately fifteen acres. It's also to amend the corresponding P D development notes, and this actually, the purpose for that is to develop, to accommodate development of a mixed-use center to include a variety of commercial and residential uses. Just for some history, this parcel here was rezoned in two thousand and eight when they established the Newport Commons P D. It was broken down into three different pods. The first two pods were approximately thirty-five acres, and that was where the commercial area was going to be. Combination of office, commercial, and retail. Also allowed in those two pods were townhomes and apartments up to eighteen dwelling units per acre. The south side in Pod Three is the single-family detached homes at four units per acre, with minimum lot, with the fifty feet, and minimum lot size of six thousand square foot. This prop, this development actually never occurred, it's been sitting vacant now since two thousand and eight. Earlier this year in two thousand and five, twenty-five, the P C approved a preliminary plat. This was presented to the planning commission to be able to do a residential dis- development. It's broken down into three separate areas. The area there at the top for the red is the commercial area, so they actually pulled out about ten acres for future commercial development. In between that are some townhomes. This, a plot was approved for hundred and, actually ninety-five attached townhomes, and then south of that, the single-family residential properties there, they could get hundred-and-twenty-nine detached homes. This was approved in earlier this year, and if this application here does not go forward, they can go back by right and develop it as it's shown right here. So what are they bringing forward us now? So they're bringing forward a very similar concept, concept with two pods. The pod to the top is the commercial area, and pod to the bottom is residential. And from that is a combination of retail and office space. Generally, the uses there are a subset of the general commercial district. On the bottom part is residential area, they can develop that one as four units per acre, single-family detached and townhome properties. I've indicated here in red where the development will to access, there'll be two access points off of one sixty-one, and then three of them off of Adnan Church Road. From this, this new concept plan, they have to remove the option to be able to do apartments in Pod Number One. So for every planned development, they have the opportunity to develop what they call a development code or a pattern book. And within that pattern book, that actually defines how they would develop this, about this P D. They talk about open space, landscaping, buffers, access, utilities, land uses, and buildings. So within this pattern book or this development code, there's a combination of items that are consistent with the ordinances, and some that are actually contrary to the order. Along with the pattern book, they're required to submit other components. They have submitted master architecture plans for both commercial and residential. They've also submitted a landscape master plan, and required by a special district or a P D, they have to have an approved T I A. So we have one that approved by both the S E D O T as well as York County. As I mentioned, as part of a P D, they have the opportunity to be able to do any kind of amendments and things that are actually different from what the code allows. There are ten items here within this P D development code that are actually different from the standard code that I want to be able to review that. The first one's talking about the amenities. The amenities for the commercial area here are going to be determined by the number of parking spaces. For this very, very large commercial area, that would be approximately fifteen amenities are required. The applicant has requested to move, remove that, amend that, to only have three amenities throughout the, for the commercial area, as well as to add the stormwater pond as a type of amenity, which is not typical in the commercial codes. Given the scope, the scope and the scale of this, we generally agree with the reduction in amenities, but we want to be able to see a high-quality type of amenity. We do have an exception with the stormwater ponds, and they should only be counted as part of an amenity if they are in a centrally-located focal part of the pond. And if you look at the concept plan, they're locating that stormwater pond actually behind one of their anchor tenants. So we would not want to include that as an actual amenity. The second part of the amenities is for the residential area, and that's determined by the dwelling units. Based upon the number of units they're submitting here, they would have a minimum of six amenities, requesting to have that reduced to four. Staff generally occurs, concurs with this reduction. However, they would need say that if you're going to include a stormwater pond in that amenity, it needs to include a trail of fountain seating areas designed both visibility and residence safety. The next section here is the open space. The code has a section for what they call usable open space, and that refers to compact, level, unobstructed areas for available for safe and convenient use. And for that, their code requires forty percent of the open space must be of a slope less than fifteen percent. And the applicant's requested to reduce that to require only ten percent of the area that would be allowed for any kind of, that's, that's like a fifteen percent or less. And so staff feels that ten percent is too low, but maybe forty percent could be reduced some. The next part of the open space, the code includes limitations for the ratio of types of open space that you can count to, or amenity, that you can account towards that open space. For instance, stormwater ponds can only be twenty percent of the total, and buffers of tree save, fifty percent of the total. And their request is to be able to go up to thirty percent for stormwater ponds and sixty-five percent for the required open space. Staff concurs with that, that small, small increase. For tree preservation, for tree save, based upon the code, they're required to have twenty percent for residential and fifteen percent for, for commercial. They would like to be able to do fifteen percent over the entire area. So in other words, they'd like to be able to put some of that tree save that's in the commercial area over to the residential portion. And so while that slight net reduction in the overall tree save will actually make a better tree save area for the residential pod. For grand trees, the code has a process to be able to mitigate the removal of grand trees. And in that, it's an administrative approval or a waiver is required, and with that, they have three options. One is to be able to provide additional tree save, one is to plant new trees, and the final one is to be able to do a fee-in lieu. And so the applicant has requested to be able to remove them, any grand tree, without any sort of administrative or P C approval, and then be able to utilize any of those methods that they would, they would choose to. What this would do would then eliminate any approval step, and also eliminate the cap on the fee-in lieu. And so what we might get from that would be no grand trees preserved, and then instead of getting any other tree save or anything else, option, we would just get a check for that monetary contributions. This final section here is what I consider site design, first to consider about parking. For any kind of a large development, the code requires that the parking area was to be, was to have buildings that are screening the parking from the street. And so the applicant's requested to delete this for the outlots, and staff concurs with this request. The next one is for the parking area, so for larger developments, the code requires that forty percent of the parking areas be located between the front facade of the building and the road. The applicant's request is to remove this requirement as well for, for Pod Number One. If you were to do that, to make any kind of change would, would result in a, a big change to their design, but it would improve the visibility and function of the property. The next one is talking about drive-through, drive-through queuing. The, the code requires a bypass lane when there are two parallel lanes are provided. The request is to be able to remove any of the bypass lanes for drive-through queuing. So what that means is when you have a fast food or restaurant, and you have queuing for lanes, is to have a, an opportunity to have a bypass to get away for, in case you change your mind, you don't want to go in there. They're requesting to remove that. Staff recommends that bypass lanes be provided. And the final site design change is about bike racks. P D is required to put bike racks based upon the number of parking spaces. And as I mentioned before, this is a very large amount of parking space, would require approximately eighty bike racks. And so they requested to be able to limit that to twenty for the, the retail area, and then two for each of the, each of the outlots. And staff concurs with that alternative. As I mentioned before, there is a traffic improvement, a T I A's been, has been provided for us, so we do know what they will be doing in terms of any kind of improvements, both on the site and off the site. The top green on the left-hand side is at the intersection of Param and Old York Road. They're required to do site improvements to be able to remove the left out from Param Road. The other traffic improvement is the intersection of one sixty-one, Old York, Adnan Church, required to put a westbound right turn lane, and this must be done before they can get their C Os. Phase one of the project includes the main anchor building, a small amount of retail, and about fifty homes. And then when they come back in for phase two, when they complete the project, they're required to, at that point, their T I A represents that they should be able to get warrants for a traffic signal. And they would install a traffic signal as they leave the site, as well as make additional improvements to the intersection traffic lights at one sixty-one, Adnan Church and Old York Road. So with that, staff recommends approval of the request with the final, with five amendments. Planning commission by a vote of five to zero, they also recommend approval with the amendments. As I was going through that, through my presentation, through the table, the areas that were involved were the ones we would like to see amendments. The first one was for the commercial, planning commission recommends a minimum of four amenities. Once again, the code probably requires fifteen, the applicant wanted three, the planning commission recommends four. And that stormwater ponds cannot be included as an amenity in the commercial area unless designed as simply located in focal point to the pod. In the residential areas, stormwaters can be counted if they have a trail, fountain, seating areas, as mentioned before. And then for the usable space, the planning commission made a recommendation that they go to the full forty percent of the open space, must be comprised of dry land or slope less than fifteen percent. Like I mentioned, they wanted to get fifteen, or ten percent. Code requires forty, planning commission feels the forty percent is the appropriate number. And the final one was for the grand trees, and that was to follow whatever the existing grand tree code is, as it is right now, as opposed to their, their amendments.
That's a lot. Was this, was, I've looked at a lot this past week with all the things we've had on our agenda. Was this information, this PowerPoint provided to council before just now being presented?
No, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't overlook it.
It was not part of the, yeah.
Okay.
Typically don't provide those.
Does council have any questions? Mr. Atkins?
I want, it stated on record that this was approved, the original one, in oh-eight. And basically, as Diane stated, if this doesn't, would you state for me how many it could bring into?
Eighteen point two per acre, I mean, per.
Diane has a male voice.
I thought she was sitting beside me.
I can.
The ventriloquist.
I'm the man of many voices, as I was saying.
So, as you were saying, or as who was saying, so in Pod Number One and Two, like I'd mentioned, they could do apartments by right. Dwelling is up to eighteen dwelling units per acre. So if you do the math, the thirty-five acres, they could do six hundred and thirty apartments in Pod Numbers One and Two. And then they can do, based upon four units per acre for the bottom part, they could do eight hundred and, I'm sorry, two hundred homes back there. For a total of the overall development, they could do eight hundred and thirty. No one's ever presented that to us, we've never seen anything for that, but technically, yes, by right, they could do that. This amendment here, like I mentioned, has removing the opportunity for the apartments from Pods One and Two, and therefore, they would remove the opportunity for, to do the six hundred homes.
Right. And could you go back to the traffic? Cause I, I want all my constituents in which Watts is over there with me to understand that this is going to be, I don't know how they're going to make it work. And if I had to vote on it myself personally, it would be. But could I request, one, the, the light that lines up right there with Adnan Church?
Existing light.
The red light there?
Yeah, that's existing one at Hansmill, Adnan Church.
Yeah. Could they, could they add any amenities? We've always struggled with Newport Fire Department, which is right in the area, getting out, and I've already requested from the state that the fire department needs a access to get out, whether it be a way to help them on the other side to come to that light, or?
Yeah, I don't believe, that's within the scope of this development. I think they'd have to put up one of those, like, only on fire lights at the intersection with the fire. That's a D O T request, that's their road.
I don't request it, but if any, I was trying to get the developer to do something.
I understand, yeah. It's like I say, it's beyond their scope, but.
And how does it work? Chris, I've never understood, we're in the housing part of this thing, what do you call it when you, one specify if they provide for teachers, fire, or police access homes?
I think your question is, is there any workforce housing?
Yeah.
That's been approved in there?
Not specifically, no. They haven't given us any kind of a price point. They have shown us, with that move is in the packet there, what they have some examples of what would be going in this neighborhood, but they haven't given us a price point, nor have they set aside anything for any kind of affordable housing.
But would I be able, and how would I request them to provide?
I think that would be a function of making amendments and having discussions with the developer, but I think if there are any other questions, questions for staff at this point before, we don't even have a motion on the floor. But I think what you're, what you're talking about would be an amendment to the plan that would need to be brought up.
Yeah. I just want to stress, I, I mean, I, after this is over, I think that we need to have this talk, or whatever it takes for these things that have been stretched out. Cause everything is changing, I mean, not even like the stormwater and all, and it's took this long for this to come to. A lot happens in between, since two thousand and eight to now, that could make a difference on, uh, large deals like this. And we need to have some type of timeline or something where they have to come back to the existing council to get a, a whole relook at. You get what I'm saying? Because I mean, thi- this is going to not only overwhelm one sixty-one, it's going to divert and even put more over on Highway Five. It's concerning, and, and, and the, like we talked about, the small area plan, we do need to, to do something to swate off some this, cause I don't know how we're going to get up one sixty-one.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Yes. Diane, will you pull up the slide that has the anchor tenant and then the retention pond behind it, between the anchor tenant and the residential, please? That won't work, thank you. So you mentioned that the retention pond may not qualify as a feature. But the way I look at this is, you've got, you've got commercial on the front, you have residential on the back, and the retention pond is sitting right in the middle with a walking trail around it, a water feature, benches. To me, it's almost a natural water feature between the, the two sets of parcels, the multifamily, single family, and, um, commercial. May not be traditional, but the way it sits, it's right in the middle, it's a, it's a good breakpoint between the two.
Sure, it, it does border the, the two separate uses, but it will be at the back end of a very large building, and so that's pretty much going to dominate what you see. But yeah, they can amenitize that to be able to add some, some features to it. And that's why we feel it's important for the property, for the, the stormwater ponds and residential, that I can see as being, you know, an amenity.
An amenity, yeah.
But behind a, a large anchor tenant, maybe not so pleasant of an experience.
Yeah. It looks like it's a good breakpoint between the two to me, but, okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, so on the, the question I have is on the commercial piece of this. The, are these to be more retail spaces, or, I guess I'm seeing three hundred thousand of retail, okay. Do we have people that, at this point, we feel are committed to, on the commercial side for these front?
I really can't speak to what the developer, in terms of what they have in terms of commitments.
Yeah.
I do know that they are in talks with, with folks.
Okay.
I know that the, the front portions of that, the way it's being peered here, you'll see, it's like a gas station, fast food restaurants along the frontage, and then you'll have a, a very large anchor tenant, as well as some, go ahead and see if I can make this thing work. Aren't the posses going to work? Anyway, um, there'll be like some general strip retail on, on two sides of that, that property there.
Okay. Um, so, this is overwhelming to me. The pods are now residential, one and two, right?
So right now, there are three pods. One and two are the commercial, and then Pod Three is residential.
Pod Three is residential, okay, and so?
That's currently what we have.
Wait a minute, can you say that again, because that last slide said?
So currently with the exist, you mean the existing P D, it's been approved, is that what you're asking?
What you're proposing.
Okay, so what's currently, there's three pods, one and two of commercial, and then three is residential. The plan here is two pods, so they've, essentially, they've, they've merged Pod Number One and Two together, and then they have Pod Two is now, it's residential, that was the old Pod Three.
So one is commercial.
Yes.
And two, okay.
Yes.
So how many residential?
So what they've presented here is a total of, they're showing a hundred and ninety-five residential units. They are allowed up to two hundred and forty-seven. So they have submitted a preliminary plat, so we're looking at what is a hundred and ninety-five residential units on that Pod Two section.
Now, is that single family or?
The combination of single family and detached and attached, that's an actually, that's, it's on there, a hundred and thirty-five single-family detached and sixty townhomes. So the area to the, to the west on the, the left side over there, where the townhomes are, and the large lots below that are, are the single-family detached.
Okay, and rental or on the?
They haven't said, it's whatever the market, whatever they would like to do, but I think they're for sale.
Okay, and, I mean, that's a big jump, a decrease.
It is a decrease, and so, like I said, they, by removing the apartments from the top part, they have reduced the apartment part of it.
Yeah.
But from Pod Number Two, from what they could have done, or can do now, what they are doing, that's a slight decrease. And so for instance, when it was firstly, first approved, based upon that, they could do, just. when it was firstly, first approved, based upon that, they could do, just talking about Pod number two, they could do two hundred units previously. Now they can do two hundred and forty-seven. So actually, it's an increase because they added some property. I mentioned, part of what they're doing is they're removing a parcel, but they're adding two. And of that, a big chunk of that is the residential area. So they are actually adding more residential area to this PD from what they had previously, by about fifteen acres.
And so, and so the TIA was just a stoplight, basically? I mean, what kind of TIA did they do?
Very intensive TIA, I will say.
Cause you know that's a problem that I...
It does also address all their access points. And so, for instance, the secondary access point off of one sixty-one, that was reduced to a, a, no left turnout. So they can turn in from the left, otherwise it's right. The top line across Marion Street, the TIA requires that to be also right in, right out. So there have been some substantial improvements required. And also, I've mentioned the turn lane at the intersection, at one sixty-one had, at the church and Hansmo Highway, they are required to put in a turn lane as you're moving westbound from, say, coming from Rock Hill to York, and you're gonna go north onto one, onto Hansmo Highway. They have to put in a right turn lane. That'll help the traffic right there.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, please. Is it possible to get a connection between the existing, existing Shell Station and the, do y'all know? Does anybody know?
We've, we've worked with, and I think the applicant is still trying to work, and so we hope in the future that we can get a connection through there. They're just trying to work that out.
Yeah, it, it's a terrible little gas station to get in and out of, and it gets a lot of use, but it would be great if you could get connected over.
I agree, yeah.
Um, the other one is, is, has the Grantry survey been completed? Was it on the other plan that went to PC?
I believe they have completed the Grantry survey, and so I think that data is available.
Can we get a copy of it?
Sure.
Can you put back up the recommendation, the amendments that you're requesting?
I can try. There we go.
And I guess, wanna, there's a lot of information. I appreciate these reports, cause it helps digest all of this information. I was unable to, to meet, to take a look at that, so I think it would be helpful, to the extent that they're available, having this, you know, ahead of time would certainly help. But one of, did I, did I see where the amenities in the area that they were obligated for went from like thirteen to two?
So in the commercial area, they're required to do, based upon parking fifteen, and they requested to go to three. Planning Commission said, no, we need to have at least four. But, but we also, we've added that, you know, they need to be able to work with staff to get quality amenities. And so we're not just saying, you know, like a bench here and a, here and there. We wanna have good quality amenities, and I think the applicant is, is up to that.
And so, I think I'll have some other questions too, but I think what I'm hearing, you all, at least staff at this point, you're, you're recommending first reading with these conditions, is that?
Yes.
All right, any other questions for staff?
One, one thing, the, the build-out on it's gonna be pretty long, right?
They're estimating to be built out by twenty thirty. So twenty twenty-eight for the phase one, and then twenty thirty for second phase. Typical. Not that long.
If there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve with these conditions.
Second.
You said that with enthusiasm, Mr. Atkins.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, believe me, if I could stop it, I would.
Showed a lot of energy on that one.
You sit in a powerful chair, but the motion is to approve with the conditions as noted. Any discussion? All the favors, yeah?
Aye.
First reading carries. Next item. Counsel to consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Sample, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project investors, collectively the company, to provide for certain infrastructure credits in connection with the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, collectively the project, to the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park and certain infrastructure credits to be made available to the company and the project, and three other matters relating thereto.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Roddy?
I had the pleasure of reaching out to the Rock Hill School District, and I spoke with every single one of them today about what the breakdown, what the give is from us, what the give is from the city, what the give is from the school district. And this was the first they've heard of this project involving their money. And so, we had the discussion about allowing them to weigh in on their give, even though the responsibility's on us, the onus, the anuses is on us, to make the decision, and unlike decisions that we've made in the past with some other entities, we've consulted with them to get their blessing or their denial of giving up their money. I think it's only right that they're given the opportunity to let us know where they stand on what their portion is or would be by this give. And I gave them my word that I would allow them the opportunity, before we made that decision, to get it to them, to allow all parties involved to reach out to them, to present to them, to present the information, the same information that we got, that's helping us make our decision, for them to be allowed to make the decision before we committed their money to this project. And they certainly welcomed that opportunity, said they would welcome the, the group to come, make a presentation to them, present them with the same, where this job information, scope of the project. So I would like to ask for a deferral before we take first reading, so that everybody's on the same level playing field, everybody knows what's being given, what's being received, what's at stake by all parties involved. And so, I like to make that in the form of a motion, that we defer this until we have a letter or some commitment from the school district giving us their blessing or their willingness to allow us to give up, and I don't mind saying the number, if I can, it's eighteen point six million dollars of their money versus the, I think it was, was it four point eight million of county money?
We're, we're prepared to talk more about it if you want. I mean, I'd like to comment too when you're done, Counsel.
So my, my, my ask is that we defer this until we've heard back from the school district as to how they want to proceed with this project.
Amendment on the table is to defer this to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
We have a second to the amendment. Any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, I'll, I guess I'll chime in. So I had a chance to talk to the Chair of the Rock Hill School District today, after I received her call, after you had sent the information over to her. What concerns me about this is, I can just speak to being on council since two thousand twenty-three, we have passed so many economic development initiatives with fee and lose, with concessions on taxes, and they get sixty-two percent of the tax, whatever it is, and this is the first time we've heard something from them on a project. My suggestion was, after listening to her side, was that it would probably make sense for us to sit down and talk about how economic development projects are structured, and why they're structured the way they're structured. When we have to compete with North Carolina that has a lower tax rate than South Carolina, we're already at a disadvantage. So you almost have to do, if, if, if you want an employer to come in, you almost have to compete somewhat, especially if you're in competition with North Carolina. Anyway, to me, it would make sense to have a meeting, not just with the school district, but in this case, Rock Hills involved, and in a situation where Fort Mill's involved, and the Fort Mill School District's involved, I guess we need to have a meeting with them, and Clover, and York as well. We haven't done this, to my knowledge, so I don't know why we're singling out this particular project. It's a big number, but it's not the biggest number that York County Council's had to deal with, and it won't be the largest.
Well...
If we, so, let's just, I think the motion, the motion is to, it, the amended motion is to consider deferral until the next council meeting, so...
True. But, but I would add that we can still meet with the school district if you do vote on, on first reading. And I know our Economic Development Director has reached out to them today as well. We, we're happy to go meet with them to talk more about it, but I don't think that precludes you from voting on, on first reading.
I wanna say, oh, you want?
Go, no, go ahead. If we're coming down the line, I'm next.
Well, you made the motion.
Well, I made the motion, but we're coming down the line. We would, okay. So, I've been on council a long time. And it's not unheard of for a project to get another entity's blessing. You know, I've, I've been up here fourteen years, and to say that we've never done it, or why now? It's not a why now, it's their money. And I've used the analysis with other council members. I wouldn't want my wife spending money that I haven't given her permission to spend, if it's my money. We should have a protocol on every single deal that we do to notify, and it's not on them to know what we're doing. It's on us to let them know that we're giving up their money. Whether we've done it in the past or not, it doesn't make it right with me to say, we're gonna give up six, eighteen point six million of the school district's money, and they not have a say. Regardless of what we've done in the past, and I'll go back to the, to the deal that we done with, that fell through. We talked about the Panthers deal for almost two years. Everybody signed off on what they were given. Everybody knew what they were given. Everybody knew exactly, out of the money pledged from Rock Hill to school district to York County, what they were given. It's only right, and especially when I contacted them today around lunchtime to say, hey, did you know that we're about to commit eighteen point six million dollars of your money to this project? And it was astounding. This is the first I've heard of it. I called every single board member and made them aware of it. They want to be a part of this process, and I think it's unfair if we exclude them, and in the process, giving up their money. And if anybody thinks that's fair and right, then you're not right. So I want to stick to what I told them, and I called her, I called the board chair again at five fifty, and say, did you talk to our Economic Development Director and say that you're fine with this? And she was like, no, we want to have this in front of us before. That was the last word I spoke today, ten to six. And that's what I told her that I would ask for, out of respect and courtesy, because I wouldn't dare want the school district to have the authority to pledge our money and not include us. And so it should be the same way going back and forth on both sides. So that's where I stand.
I agree with you. I think they should have a say, and I'm good with that. I'm not in agreement with deferring it, though. They've got two more readings coming up. They can hopefully meet everything. If we can't, we can defer the second or third meeting, but I don't see a point of deferring first reading. I mean, we've, I can move on along.
I'll, I'll say, it was interesting that, that management spoke up, cause I think one of the things that we had talked about earlier today was that there were still some things that you all thought should be discussed even before, so I'm surprised at the, I mean, it seemed to me that you felt like having a deferral was, would, would help the county to take a look at some of the other issues, not just this one, but...
And we, we can have Mitch come up here, our Economic Development Director. There are things we can continue to work on. I think for the reasons stated, that what I was saying was it doesn't preclude y'all from, from having first votes.
I just wanted to make sure I had that clear.
That is something that we can, we can do, and we were intending already to go meet with the school district, so I, I just wanted to make that clear. But I do think anytime you defer a project, there are risks, so that, that, that's out there. But there's plenty of things we can continue to work on if y'all do defer.
I'll say, this is, um, this is my district. I certainly don't think that there's any harm in the deferral and the posture that we're in, and would support that for different reasons too. I mean, I know that the school district was consulted, but this is a larger one, I think. I, I do wanna say this, and it's important, because I support, I support all businesses that have the right to be here. And this company has been very professional and honest with their responses, but it is a very, very big impact. And the question really before council is, should council give thirty million dollars in an infrastructure credit to a company to do the infrastructure that's really needed for them to conduct that business? So I, I think that, that's the key distinction here. I, I certainly don't have a problem with hearing, hearing from the school, and I think that there's some additional conversations that were being discussed about how do we look at, how to deal with that. It, it's strange to me that, that we have never, as a council, given this type of credit before, and, and I'll just be upfront. I'm trying to be extremely objective about this particular project, and look at ways to find ways to find support for that. But I think our community has asked us also to be very discerning about what we're doing with the project funds, and, and I think taking a little bit more time just to make sure that we've looked at the, at the different options would be, would be valuable. The number of jobs is real, is, is small compared to some of the others that we've discussed, and I know that we'll get into a lot of the meat at the other discussions that we have. But, but I do support, I, I support deferral and would, would ask for deferral while we continue to get some additional information.
So, yeah, I, in regards to this, I, I'm, I'm gonna kinda piggyback off what Andy says. I, you know, I, I think it's important that we do contact the school, school district, absolutely. A hundred percent. And I, and I think, again, we have to go through three readings on this. All right, so again, we're gonna have two more readings after this. We're gonna have time to go to the school district. If we need to defer the second reading, then we defer. But I think getting past the first reading is really, you know, important. Then we'll have those discussions, and then we, you know, take it from there. So again, I'm, I'm in a position to move forward with first reading.
Okay. I am concerned that there's so many questions about that the school, uh, school board was contacted. They're, they want a meeting, and then some folks say, oh, well, they were contacted. And then some say they were not contacted. I don't understand why we have a miscommunication here on something so important. I am concerned that they need to be, uh, this needs to be addressed with the school board if that, there's that much money involved now. So, the thing is, I think that we have in the past, plenty of times past first reading, and then we could defer the second, um, second reading. So I probably am gonna support it that way. But I do want the school board contacted, and that they are allowed to sit down with the folks involved and have complete, get all their questions answered, and, and see what comes after that, what happens with that.
Great. And, and I think to that question, you know, I would like our Economic Development Director to speak to what we typically do for projects, and I know our CFO can speak to engagement with the school districts too, on the, on the funding side. So I'd ask you all to share a little bit about that, and then also the timetable of the project, and, and, uh, what we might expect moving forward.
Tommy?
You want me to come to the mic?
I hadn't spoken yet.
Yeah.
I was trying to address our, the questions you had.
Go ahead and address what.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you all. Just, uh, so you do know, I did reach out to the school board chair today. It was at about five twenty-three, and we had a great conversation. Did express that I was sorry that they were just finding out about this project. Some of the news had spread around, so I wanted to make sure that they were fully aware that there was a willingness, and I think it was a great opportunity for also us to really establish a better relationship there. I've been in this role a little over a year. They've got a new school superintendent as well. I would say this probably needs to be extended across all school districts. So communication to me is something that's really important. I'm happy to do that. And I also expressed I'd be willing to go to their board meeting next Tuesday and talk in executive session with them about the project in more detail. Also reached out to the company. They're willing to agree to do that as well, just so they can start the communication line, and they can have any questions addressed or, or concerns addressed. As far as timing goes, as you all know, I don't have to explain this in great detail. Every project typically is followed with an NDA, so communication about those are very secure. As it relates to involvement with the school district, since I've been here, I've not had those conversations. As it relates to involvement with the school district, since I've been here, I've not had those conversations in terms of each project and the impact. I know when we've approved, like Pratt Industries, one that recently announced, that wasn't a conversation to add. But it is an opportunity that we can always do better. So I'm happy to do that. If there is a concern on that side, I get it, and be happy to do that. But as we always look at it, for every incentive we do, whether it be a fee in the tax deal, SSRC, and in this case, an infrastructure credit agreement, we do look at the millage, the percentage of the millage, how that carries. And so for in, in this instance, eighteen thousand, eighteen million, six hundred and sixty thousand spread over that twenty-year period. If you broke that down to an annual, for the Rock Hill School District, that is about nine hundred and fifty-one thousand annually. That would be contributed into that agreement as part of the credit to reduce that tax burden. But that also would be what the school district would get in taxes as well on an annual basis. So there is a benefit on that side. Did explain with the school board chair kind of how that works. She was appreciative of the fact that I did explain that. She was aware of that. Just wanted more detail around the project, which I completely understand.
Anyone else?
Yeah, my biggest thing was is I actually thought we were going to talk more about this than just when we talked in this session the other week. Because I've always stressed that I think, I mean, they're welcome to come by all means, but I've, I've said that I think that all the companies and, and developers included should, should pay and take the burden of us off on the infrastructure to put the things in. But I, I would mainly like to talk more on, on that part of it. Because as many trucks as we're talking about, you know, I don't care what kind of road you build, it's going to have an impact on it, and whether it's far away from the interstate or not, because that's even going to affect that part of it.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to, it looks like the amendment may fail, but I'm going to support the amendment to, to do deferral only because there have been many conversations that I've had with staff, that there are some other discussions that are happening with City of Rock Hill, who's also a part of this, and school. We just deferred an item for the school district in order to try and get that right. And we also, thankfully tonight, have approved the majority of, I think all of our economic development board members are going to be sworn in. And one of the first things that they're going to look at is this particular area. So I'm not really sure why there is such a rush and why doing a deferral harms anything. So I do support the deferral. If the, if the deferral fails, I do want to be clear that it is very concerning to me, and I think taking the position that I'm taking, there has been, that we have never given an infrastructure credit like this before ever, which is why I think it makes sense to have the school involved in this. There was an issue with Panthers, and I, and I just think having them involved would be important. Council has also not given any sort of FLO for warehouse and distribution, new warehouse and distribution in over ten years, and this is quite a departure. The number of trucks is, is concerning. Thousands of trucks a day plus a, a number of vehicles as well. And, and so I think that this is one of those major developments and major developments that would require some initial discussion and prior to first reading. So the motion currently is to defer first reading and get, gather all that information. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so the deferral fails, we fall to the other, a motion, which is to approve first reading and the second. Any other discussion on that?
Is it possible, I don't know, have there been any, any discussions on letting the company name come out that you know of? Because what I would really like to have before any of these things, this is a major, major project, we've all talked about it. But as it's come up over with the QTS project just recently, nobody knows who these things are and can't. You know, we want the public to weigh in on it. And if the public doesn't know what they're weighing in on, then they can't weigh in. So I would like to hear, I would like for that information to maybe be shared.
Interesting point, and I, and I'll, I started to say this and limit it just to council, but it, the information that is provided, there's a lot of details that I think can be shared and should be shared in a presentation at one of the future meetings. But typically, what, what we have been told is that the company name is protected. We're not allowed to share that. The concern that I have is that I have been advised that some council members have actually been reached out, and there are folks saying the company name that are not council members and that are not folks that are included. So that, that's concerning to me, and I do think that, that having some clarification from legal on that will be important because that came, that was discovered today, and I think that that's, that's important to try and root that out.
There's an article in the Business Journal today that mentions the name of the company.
Well, there's that.
So I think it'd be up to the company, obviously, to tell us what direction we should move here.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm a no on that. All right. We do have item number one in consent. I mean, item number nine from consent that was pulled out, that is. Counsel to authorize the acceptance of specified roads in the Kingsbury Project, the State Line Baxter Lane Project, and the Edmonds Farm subdivision. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I'll start. So I asked for this to, to be pulled out, not in particular those projects, anything to do with those projects, but the general overall of, are we going to continue to accept residential subdivision roads? Or essentially, what are private roads? Are we going to continue to accept them for county owning? Or, that didn't sound right, anyway. Is the county going to own them? We can't fix and repair the roads that we own currently, and we're going to keep taking more and more in. I, I would really like to see if this would go to a bigger discussion.
So I think that our transportation committee has talked, and we've talked about that, and the motion currently on the table is to approve this, and I think the question of whether or not the county should take a look at doing what Lancaster has done, which is to stop taking in these things, would need to be something that staff would need to evaluate and provide to. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I, I don't know that tonight's the night that, that we debate that, especially since the motion has been made to approve it. I think.
Well, can I pause my motion and say, should we defer it instead?
I think we have to operate under the current, let's, does management or legal want to comment on this?
I believe there's an agreement, a non-reimbursable agreement guiding, governing the acceptance of this particular road set. But for a topical discussion at a future time, we can certainly do that.
All right, so the motion on the table is to approve. Sounds like we don't have much option on that. I, I support us taking, continuing to take a look at that, and I think that's going to be a delicate balance, because folks are going to say, hey, you accepted everybody else, how come I'm not getting my road in here? And how are we going to address that? So I think there's a lot of, there would need to be a lot of analysis done. I think the appropriate place to do that would be the transportation committee. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Committee and other reports, Finance and Operations Committee, Chairman Tom Odette.
All right. So this evening, we had the operations, Finance and Operations Committee meeting at five thirty today. Present was Councilman Roddy and Councilman Atkins. We did approve several approvals for new committee seats. One of them being the Committee for Application for Services for Beth, Bethrell Fire District Board, and that was Paul Wise. And again, that was for a second term. We also confirmed a approval for River View Fire Department, also for a first term of Harold, Harold Barfield, and also a second term for Justin La Roach. We did approve for a consideration for an application for York County Forever for a vacancy in District Two for Marty Cotton. Also in District Four for Robert Carter, and District Six for Ron Parker. And then also, we did have a request for the Katava Regional Workforce Investment Board, and that was an approval for a vacant seat for Zach Williams to fill that spot. And then lastly, we had a request for the Service of Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, and we voted a, for District Seven, Gordon Burnett, for a first term from within that seat. So that is the recap of our meeting.
Thank you, sir. We do not have any citizen concerns, any council member, new non-agenda comments before executive session?
Yeah, I've got one quick one. I'd like to refer an ordinance change that was, that would be for golf carts from within Baxter Village. Kendra has put together a baseline review and kind of document that would be referred over to Planning for review and approval. So I'd like to go ahead and submit that over to Planning for their review and approval.
Anyone object to that going to the Planning and Zoning Committee? All right.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other council member, new non-agenda comments?
I'll just make one comment. It's nine twenty-one, and we're going into executive session to discuss important matters, as we always do. And every one of us is ready to go home. We've got to find a better way to go into executive session, whether it's, I don't know. I, I think we need to talk about this and figure out a better solution. I, for one, don't want to be here till ten or ten-thirty at night. I'm sure y'all don't either. So there's got to be some other way. Maybe we knock executive, executive session out first. I, I don't know what we do, but I'd, I'd love for staff to explore it and come back with suggestions, or we explore what we can do. I've heard of some councils setting a time limit on their meetings and executive session. I'm not sure what the solution is, but this is a big commitment. I don't know, we signed up for it. But if there's a solution, I'd love for us to uncover it.
This seems to be one of.
Called this.
Hey, this seems to be one of the earlier nights. Just a reminder, I think we have a Public Works Committee meeting on the twenty-second, which is Wednesday. So we're looking forward to that. Couple, couple good, hot topics we need to touch on. Other than that, we're good.
Anyone else? I started getting some of these emails and, and calls where there's just seems like there's a lot of articles that are coming out that are talking about what are the public disclosures that are required, how to recuse folks, how folks should do that. There was, there was an interesting article that came out about how folks are interrelated in business deals. I can tell you from being a lawyer and being involved in these things, that most of the time, things that, that showing, the, showing and disclosing things doesn't result in anything that requires recusal. But I do think that it's important that we start doing, and I'm going to try to start do that, doing that going forward, asking folks that come up to at least disclose, and that's what our ordinance talks about, disclosing if there's a financial interest or a prospective financial interest in any matter that's coming before council, that they do that, and I think it's incumbent upon council to also do that if anyone has a personal financial interest in, in the matter or the individual who, who intends to, to ask for the, whatever it is, whether it's a development or something like that. I think it would pay dividends to make sure to reiterate that and to set the example there. So I'm going to start doing that, and I think that we need to be real careful as a council to do that as well.
If you don't mind, I'll add to that, because I had a situation with the Clover School District. So I wrote, first of all, I called the Ethics Commission, and then I wrote the Ethics Commission to explain my position and the opposing side's position, and they gave me a strong opinion, a definitive opinion on whether there was a conflict of interest. So that's another option for you as well.
Well, and I, I just think sometimes, sometimes it's better not to have the appearance and to just disclose that when it, when it needs to be. There are many times where there are just folks who don't want something to happen to say that. But I think if there's a, a direct financial interest, we want to make sure to ask any folks to, to disclose that, and I think it's incumbent upon us to do that as well. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yeah, we got a few items here. Receipt of legal advice, legal, legal matters litigation update, contractual matter, Parker IGA's, personal matter, contractual matter, county attorney annual review. And lastly, receipt of legal advice, consideration of settlement agreement for project number one seven two-two eight dash one-two, track number four, SC one-six-one slash US twenty-one slash S slash fifty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will go into executive session.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yes, one. Motion to approve settlement agreement for project number 17228-12, tract number four SC 161 U.S. 21/ S 50 as discussed in the executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.